Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Millis Select Board Meeting of February 28th. This evening, we have with us Ms. Underhill and Mr. Schultz, who are Suck Board members, and Mr. Gazinski, our Town Administrator. I'm Pete Germaine, and we have a number of announcements we're going to kick off the evening with. I'm going to start with a few. First one is, I'm going to read this. We got it from the Millis Schools just the other day, and they're pleased to announce that the Millis Public Schools will receive a grant of $119,166 from the Baker Administration. The grant is intended to equip schools and districts with the high-quality core instructional materials needed to accelerate literacy, learning, and will support schools and districts to purchase initial professional development for educators to implement those materials. The other thing I wanted to mention about the schools is they have been selected by the MSBA, I guess it is MSBCA, to conduct the study and start the study process for potential renovation or reconstruction of the middle school, high school. So that process is now moving along very smartly. I also wanted to take a moment to announce a couple of other things. First, the Millis Public Library will be having a book sale on March 25th, 26th, and 27th. At that time, it's open to anyone who comes, and they haven't had the opportunity for this for some time, obviously, but they look forward to everyone participating. You'll have an opportunity to buy the books, buy the bag, and in a number of other areas. So please, come in, participate. It does help fund some of the things that take place at the Millis Public Library. Another point I wanted to make this evening is that our own Camille Stanley was named the Conservation Administrator of the Year by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. She'll be receiving her award on March 3rd, but I think anybody who wants to should say, "Congratulations to her." We certainly do. Work well done, Camille. And just as another point, as you know, we have a lot of costs coming up to fund our PFAS. I've written, and our board has written, any number of letters to our representatives. I strongly encourage anyone in the community to write to our representatives and see if we can get as much financial assistance as possible. These are not inexpensive mitigation facilities. They run five and a half to six million dollars, apparently, and we have to put them in at several wells. So think about that and try to help us see if we can get some additional funding. I think those are the announcements that I had. We have one other to make, and that is the Town Clerk is going to identify for us with the election coming up what papers have been taken out and what positions are available. So Lisa, if you would come up and explain.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Harden, the Millistown Clerk. We have a local election that happens every year coming up on May 9th, the second Monday in May. I wanted to let people know that there are several positions that no one has taken out papers for. We have one-year term for moderator. Donna Kabibow, the current moderator, is not running again, so that position's open. And just so people know, the first town meeting that the new moderator would be running is in November. It's not right away, so you have a little time to get up to speed on how that works. Select Board, the current Chair, Pete Germaine, is running again. He's taken out papers and has returned them. One other person, Alan Rosenfeld, has taken out papers, but that's open if anyone else is interested. School Committee, Mark Conroy, the current incumbent, has taken out papers but has not returned them, and no one else at this point has taken anything out for that. Board of Health, Matthew Fuller, is the current incumbent. He has not taken out papers yet, and no one else has, so that's open. Library Trustee, Wendy Berry, is the current incumbent. She is not running again. Tricia Barubi has taken out papers but has not returned them, so that's an open seat. Planning Board, George Yerid, is the current incumbent. He has not taken out papers, so that position's wide open. I haven't heard either way on whether he's even interested in running again. And Housing Authority is a bit of a problem and has been for quite a few years in terms of who's supposed, how many people are supposed to be on it, not just Millis, the whole state. As far as I know, Carol Baker is the current person whose term is up. That may or may not be open, but I believe there's a, we only have four people on there, so I think there's another position open. So if anyone's interested in Housing Authority, feel free to talk to me, and we'll figure it out. So that's it.
Thank you. Again...
Oh, sorry. One thing. The deadline for taking out papers is March 17th. They're due back no later than March 21st, and again, the election's May 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, I encourage everyone to consider running for these offices. This is how our town operates. We need to have people willing, who are willing to spend time and work with the town and run the committees that are managing the town and how we run our own government. So please, consider that. Okay.
I think we have another announcement.
Oh, please, go right ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We do have one other announcement. It looks like the Millis Lions Club is going to be having an April Fool's Day porketta and chicken dinner. And if my thing would scroll, I could tell you more about that. So it would be April 1st, because that's April Fool's Day, and I think it's at 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and tickets are on sale. It's open for both adults and children. And, you know, if I ever get this to load up, oh, thank you.
Oh, here you go.
Six to nine.
Excellent, yes. So six to nine, thank you, at St. Thomas Large Hall. Adults are 25 or two for 45, and children 12 or under or 15. And you can order your tickets in advance at millislianceclub.org, or you can send them a check. So we'll have that information up as well.
Great, thank you. Okay. Is there anything else that we might have missed? Otherwise, I'm going to move forward and go into the open session, appointments and hearings. The first appointment we have is with the Board of Health Department for an Assistant Two position, and for that, I'm going to turn to both Mr. Gazinski and Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As written in your packet, there is a request from John McVeigh, our Health Director, for an appointment of a Department Assistant Three for the Board of Health, and I am happy to inform the Board that we have an excellent candidate come forward. This is Heather Graham for the position. Her information's in your packet. She has quite a background that is, will be very helpful for this position, and I'm very excited to be able to request that the Board ratify my appointment of Ms. Heather Graham to the Department Assistant Three. And Mr. McVeigh is here to give a little more background and answer any questions that the Board may have.
Hi. Good evening. Yes, we definitely would want the Board to appoint Heather Graham for the Department Assistant Three position. She was, her resume's extremely, she's got a great resume, and we feel as though her background is conducive to the job. So again, we'd like to have her onboard as soon as possible, and she's here in the audience. Let's have her right there. So if there's any questions you have regarding the candidate, please let myself or Mr. Gazinski know.
Thank you. I reviewed your credentials. Your resume is quite robust, so we really appreciate that. You have quite a recommendation here from Mr. McVeigh and Mr. Gazinski. But I'm going to open it, if you will, to the Board members. Do either of you have any questions?
I just have a technical question. Is this pending any kind of a...
Only, she's already had a query. It's just dependent on a successful physical, which is scheduled for Thursday of this week.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay.
I'll open it. Is there any, are there any comments from the audience? If not, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I move that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Heather Graham as the Board of Health Assistant Three, pending a physical.
Second.
So moved and seconded to ratify the appointment by the Town Administrator of Mrs. Heather Graham to the position of Department Assistant Three, pending approval of a physical. I'll poll, I don't have to poll the Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So Heather, welcome aboard. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
Please feel free to step up.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. It's definitely an honor to come to work for a town that I was raised in. I have an extensive family history here in town. Most of the things that are out in the hallway are my family. All the La Croix side of everything that's out there is my family. So it's been, you know, my great-grandfather worked here at the Town Hall as an assessor, and I'm really excited to be able to now step in at the Board of Health with the town that I love.
We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for volunteering to step in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item up is a review of proposed amendment to property for Cabo Knoll Estates Lip Project. So for that, we're going to have Mr. Roach and Mr. Weiss. So I'll ask the two of you to come up and tell us about what your issue is.
Well, I'll do a introduction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, it's Bob Weiss, Town Economic Development Planning Director, and this evening, we're going to ask the, well, Mr. Roach is going to ask the members of the Select Board to review a proposed amendment to Cabo Knoll Estates Development, which is planned for 1344 Main Street. Last year, you may remember, the Board approved the local initiative project for the development of 20 single-family attached units, which includes five units of affordable housing, each unit to be sold to a homeowner, and the Mass Department of Housing Community Development, DHCD, approved the project with a letter to the Board on June 10th. So I'll let Mr. Roach tell you what his proposal is.
All right, thank you. So just, so this happened kind of quick, but in the last couple of months, we were almost at the point of going to the zoning board, and the budding property to this project came up for sale. And so I approached him, and I worked a deal out with him to see if I could, you know, purchase it and add it on to this proposal, and it's, I feel it's really going to work out good because it's on the uphill side of the project. If you're familiar with where Tractor Supply is, and you're going down on the left, that's where the project is. There's a house that sits out back. That's where the original approval, you know, project. So this one is further up the hill, across from Tractor Supply, all right? It's a half-acre lot. It has a single-family Cape-style house on it, has been rented for years, and the owner just decided to sell it. So I'm trying to add that on. It's going to add on an additional eight units. We went to this, through my consultant to the State, and they see no problem with adding it on. It's going to add two more additional affordable units out of the eight. So the project now, instead of five, will have seven units. And I think one, are you going to put this up on the Board to see them, or you can't do it?
I think Maureen can do that, if she can share.
Maureen, is it possible for you to show this?
Yeah, can you hold on one?
Sure.
So while she's doing, so what it is, the entrance to this project, we have it right now on the downhill side of 109, where our only entrance is. When we add this parcel, it allows us to either go to the center with the entrance or the uphill side, and it's, I just feel it's going to be, for site distance, a safer entrance, entrance/exit onto this property. And I don't know, it just seemed like a natural to do this, and so that's why I'm in front of your Board to ask permission for this.
Okay. So have you been to the Planning Board with this?
No, this is a zoning board.
I understand. I just wanted to know if you've been to Planning Board or any other committees at this point.
No.
Okay.
No.
Just asking. Not a criticism, just trying to get an understanding of where you're doing.
No, I'm just trying to follow the steps, the procedure, how it goes through. I mean, we had a meeting with the State, which Bob was out there, and we went through a few different things, and one of them, I know that, I mean, he can speak to this if he wants, but one of his concerns was on the original entrance, when you come down the hill, you're coming down the hill onto 109, and this, if we can do this, it would kind of alleviate that situation. Not that it's not doable that way, but this is just a better way to...
Right. There was a bit of a grade coming down the hill, so this should work out better.
Given what you're trying to do, and you understand that there are sewer capacity constraints in this town, have you taken that into consideration?
Well, I did, and I had an informal discussion with Mr. Gazinski, Mr. McKay, and Bob about, you know, I just came to him to see if, you know, if this was even made, you know, a good idea or if it's feasible, and I think, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but it really was just a very minor adding on to the sewer. So the house that's there is a four-bedroom house, and the house, which I never even brought up to the Board before, but it only came into mind when we talked about this, is that the house up there is a four-bedroom. So really, we're eliminating eight bedrooms, right? And we're, so we're, not eliminating, sorry, we're making up for eight of the, let me just think about this, of the 16 bedrooms, all right, with what we have already, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So you're adding eight bedrooms to the construction.
Correct.
From what you already had, okay.
Correct. And I'll just go up to the, so this is the original project right here.
Yep.
All right, and this was the original entrance, all right, and this was the concern where it comes downhill, all right, and you come, it's the only way to do it.
Right.
You come downhill onto 109. So there's two, there's two different proposals. She's got one up here now, but this is the one where the entrance is on the high side, all right? We get better site distance, and it's much more flat going on to the site. Is she listening?
Yes.
Do you want the other one?
Yes, please. And here's another. These are just proposals for the site layout. It really, I don't know that it has to do with your decision to have them shown. And then, this is hard to see. So this is the original, all right? Can you lessen it a little bit? Bring the scale down maybe? All right, so I'm not sure why this isn't shown, or maybe I'm missing something, but anyhow, this is the lower entrance, and then the one I showed before is the higher entrance, which I feel is the better way into the project.
Okay.
All right? And these here, again, this is the original, and then this is showing the additional units right here.
So let me get clear. What specifically are you asking from this Board tonight?
We're asking for your, I guess, approval that, you know, how we had originally come to you for, did you get, Jim, I emailed you something a little bit early today?
Yeah, yeah. We have a letter that, we'll tweak this. This is similar to the letter that we did last time. It says, and this to Alana Murphy of the DHCD. And it just says that Mr. Tom Roach, Roach Building Company, has previously received the attached project eligibility letter, which I've mentioned before, for 1344 Main Street. The property immediately adjacent to his proposed project became available for sale. He was able to secure that property. He's requested to modify the project and increase the project size from 20 to 28 units. It also increased the number of affordable homes from five to seven. We've reviewed the plan and fully support the change, and we feel the larger site can safely accommodate the added homes, traffic, and any required engineering adjustments. Please accept this letter as our acceptance of the revised project, so we'll write this letter.
So you're asking for us to approve the 28, is that it, units at this time?
As part of the lip.
As part of your lip, correct?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay. I guess the question I would have would be first to Mr. McKay. You're well aware of sewer constraints and other things, so please let us know what you think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the original development is under, is within your scope. You've already approved that section of it. It's in our numbers that we carried. And as Mr. Roach, you know, stated when he came and met with us, we felt that, you know, with the additional eight rooms, eight bedrooms that will be coming off, I don't think either one of them are tying into sewer at this time, so it would come off the 440-something gallons for each home.
What's your view on this? Is this...
Yeah, I think that this is more of doable, because I think this is a project that's probably going to start a heck of a lot quicker than anything else that we, you know, we see down the road. I mean, that's the commitment that Mr. Roach made to us, that this is, you know, once he gets funding and he'd be ready to start working on this.
Now, we have been talking about imposing the sewer moratorium.
Well, we voted on it.
I understand.
Yeah, we're not talking about it. Yeah.
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
It goes into effect tomorrow.
Be sensitive.
Yeah.
As, I believe it's as of March 1st.
It is.
Yes.
That it is.
So the point is, given that, do you suggest that we should still move forward on this request?
I think that this type of project would be, from our consensus, would be that you would move forward with this project.
Okay, that's fine. Then I'm going to open it to the other Board members to begin asking some questions.
Can you, can someone just help me understand? So from what we had previously approved to this addition of eight units, how does that change the sewer capacity for this?
So there was, I would believe, so I think it was 19,000, was it seven, or, I didn't bring those numbers, but I know that it was in the GCG study supplement, so I think it was like 8,000, 9,000 gallons. So this, if you add on eight bedrooms, I think most of them are three bedrooms, so three times eight, right, 24? So you're actually 2,400 gallons, and we're taking off 440-something gallons, so you're increasing it about 1,600 gallons.
And that's assuming it is at full's capacity, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. And we know from past historical experience, excuse me, that typically, it's not. It's somewhere around 50 to 75 percent of what the projected rate is. Is that a reasonable...
That's correct. That's very reasonable.
So in reality, we're not necessarily going to even see that level of additional sewer capacity utilized.
All right, I have one more question.
Oh, of course.
Okay. So does this, does this mean that there needs to be another hookup, or do they still just have the hookup from...
So what happens is that each unit will pay a separate water and sewer entrance fee of $6,500 for each unit, and there will be a, I don't, this is a type of development, what comes in front of us, they may put two major six-inch sewer stubs into the property and then tie off of each development. They won't put 28 separate stubs coming off of Main Street. So there'll be a main sewer trunk that will come in, that will go up the street, and then each stub, each building will have its own water and sewer, especially water shut-off for each apartment and each meter, and they'll be built, you know, separately. Tom's one of the only ones that has agreed, feeling that it's sometimes, not always to his benefit, but it's, you know, when you get into rental units or something like that, although he's not going to be rental, so they're going to have to be sold, so they have to have it run a service.
And there is a six-inch stub before they did 109. The prior owner, you know, had the foresight, so there is a six-inch stub already off 109, and I think that's for the sewer, that's all we're going to have.
Need to, need to, yeah.
Okay.
My only question was, when does the sewer moratorium go into place? March 1st. Congratulations, you're under the wire. There is a wire for a reason. So I mean, because honestly, we just put it in place. I wasn't going to vote to allow more sewer until after it goes into effect, but it goes into effect tomorrow. So this is going to be the last project for a bit.
This probably would be. And this is part of why I was concerned about the sewer moratorium also, but in this case...
Exactly.
...are under the wire, so I don't have any qualms there. Given that, are there any more comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, then I'll take a motion from the Board.
All right. I move that we approve the Cabo Knoll Estates Amendment as presented.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the Cabo Hill Estates Amendment as stated, which I believe brings us, what, to a total of 28 units?
Yes.
With seven of them being for low income.
Affordable.
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 Income, I apologize.
Nope.
I have to be careful in the terminology. So the Board, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
These are the kinds of things that I think are important for the town to continue to be able to grow, but we'll take each one as they come forward.
And in the future, if we write up our policies, we can encourage not seven, but maybe 10 units or something, you know?
Right. Which reminds me, I have forwarded a draft of thoughts for policy.
Oh, good.
Have either of you responded to Mike in terms of...
I don't think I saw it.
I don't think I saw it.
I have not forwarded those.
I think I did, because a lot of times I...
If you want to forward those as part of the record tonight, I can, and provide them to the other members, and we'll post them online.
That's great. I appreciate it.
Yeah, because our plan was, as soon as we had a plan in place, to rescind the moratorium, but it made us...
And that's precisely why I went ahead and put together the initial thoughts for how we put it, what policy would be. I do have that, but Mike will make sure it gets forwarded, and these are thoughts. And we need your comments, and then we need to put a policy together. So thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of Housing Choice Initiative Plan. So Mr. Weiss?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And actually, it's the approval of Housing Choice Initiative application. We don't have a plan yet. This evening, I'm asking the Board to approve the town's application to the Mass Housing Choice Initiative Program. I sent you some information and a link to that. The Housing Choice is a designation for municipalities, and it's a designation from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. We, as a staff, worked on this application with, I worked with the Town Administrator and with the Building Commissioner. If you go on EOHED's website, you'll see the first thing that they have put in on their website now is about the MBTA Communities' Multifamily Housing Requirement, which I brought to the Board's attention a few meetings ago. The Housing Choice designation gives us as a town a leg up on certain grants and certain programs that we're going to need to meet the MBTA requirement, plus a lot of other requirements that we'll want to aspire to for our housing. The State's administration has identified inadequate housing production as one of the... core challenges that's facing the Commonwealth families and the economy these days. We all know home prices in Massachusetts have, the rate of home prices has increased faster than anywhere in the nation. The, it was announced today, in one report, that we are the third highest rental rates in the country, and we usually are there all the time. The municipal, the Boston metropolitan area is always about the third, fourth, or fifth highest rental rate around. Municipalities are the drivers for whether or not housing is built in their, in their role in zoning and permitting. And so, the Commonwealth is looking not just to build housing, but it's also looking to build more diverse housing. We are, will qualify for designation because we are one of the, Millis is one of the fastest-growing communities in the Commonwealth. However, that housing growth is not very diverse. Working families need places to live, and that's what we're looking for, and as I said, we will have a leg up in getting a number of capital investments and grants from the state if we become designated. So we'll, that's why we're recommending that we put in this application today.
Are there any costs to us to put in the application? Are there any commitments we're making as a result of putting in this application?
Well, the commitment we're making is to work to provide a more diverse housing stock for the town. There's a number of best practices that we can get, we can participate in, zoning, one of the best practices will be adopting the 48, 3A multifamily housing that, and the MBTA is, the MBTA communities are required, so that's one of them right there. And this is, again, this is not about affordable housing, it's about housing, a diversity of housing, multifamily housing, lower-cost housing for families and working families in Massachusetts.
Okay, so us, if we agree on moving forward, we're basically saying, we agree in concept, we want to participate, but there's no major commitment beyond that at this time?
That's right, it's all opt-in, and what it does is, once we, you know, can demonstrate that, yeah, we are working on getting more diverse housing in the town, we become exclusively, get exclusive admission to the Housing Choice Capital Grants, but also, we get priority access to many of the Commonwealth's grants, things like Mass Works, Complete Streets, which the Economic Development Committee is working on now, and they're going to present to this, this board in a few weeks, DOT Grants, so there's a lot of grants that will have a leg up on other communities because it is, these grants are all competitive.
Okay, thank you, I could ask a variety of others, but I'm going to open it to the board, please ask your questions.
I've seen and heard most of this on the economic development, so I'm pretty familiar with it, so I don't have any questions or, at this time.
Do you think it's a good idea?
I do.
Okay.
But I have no further questions. I'm good.
Okay, well, I should have put more thought in my answer, I really don't have any. I think it is a good item, I wasn't, I wasn't being put there.
That's fine.
And there's a lot more coming, I mean, this is step one of multiple pieces.
I think that's clear, but that's good, that sounds excellent to me. Before we take a vote on this, again, I'll open it to the audience or anyone who's participating at this time. Scott?
Fuzee 411 Unit, I think it's a great idea. I think that cities and towns are getting very expensive housing, homes are getting expensive, rents getting expensive. The past three years with the pandemic, people have been out of work or struggling, so I think the more affordable housing and housing we can get in town, I think is good for the town and good for the community, and I think it's a lot of benefits, so thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, so what, basically what we're asking is for the board to authorize the town administrator to sign and submit the application for designation to the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development.
Great, Ms. McKinnon?
Yeah, if I might add, Kathy McKinnon, 78 Island Road, this is the first I'm hearing of this, and thanks for the work, and it's a great report, but I'm wondering what's wrong with the housing in our town already. I see it as diverse housing, I see multimillion-dollar homes, and I see $300,000 homes, condominiums. I always get concerned when the state wants a municipality to play around with zoning, because we have town meeting, and we have a planning board, and we have a zoning board, and we have interested people that present zoning changes on our own as a town. We have committees that plan, I believe we're diverse with different subdivisions, like I said earlier, and every, in closing, just about everyone I know is a two-income family already, so for them to say that Millis is not a two, we need more two-income families, I don't know one that isn't, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll take a vote.
I move to approve the town's application to the Massachusetts Housing Choice Initiative Program and to authorize the town administrator to sign the application on behalf of the board.
Second.
So moved and seconded to accept, to authorize the application and town administrator, for the Massachusetts Housing Choice Initiative Program and to authorize the town administrator to sign the application on behalf of the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, I'm getting, having a hard time not saying, I'll poll the board, so much time we've been doing that. Thank you, Bob, I think that should answer what you need.
And I, I thank you, I thank the board.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approve the RFP for Town-Owned Land Inventory and Management Plan, and this is going to be Mr. Weiss and Miss, Mr. or Ms. Hayes? I don't know. Okay, well, Mr. Weiss, it looks like it's you unless somebody has joined us there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we will have somebody joining us, because I see John Stedman is here.
I was just going to say, I thought that Mr. Stedman would be joining us.
Yes, so if I, I'll introduce John, and John can, can then introduce the, the RFP for you. So this evening, the Conservation Commission is going to present to the board, for board approval, its referral for proposal, an RFP, to find a consultant to analyze and create a management plan for 35 town-owned parcels of land. The commission is seeking the board's approval to issue the document. And the proposal really is a, and I'll let John speak in just a second, is really a follow-up to what we've been doing with the town-owned space and recreation, plan, the OSRP, or Open Space and Recreation Plan. That was finalized in 2019. This, this study is really going to further analyze 35 of the town's properties and propose a practical management plan for each parcel. So the commission is looking for guidance from the, the commission being the Conservation Commission, looking for guidance from this document, that will help categorize the general character of the properties into four, four different criteria, they'll be looking for recreation, water quality, environmental municipal, municipal use properties as, and those properties which are really of no valuable asset to the town at this point, and possibly could be discarded. So, John, why don't I turn it over to you, and you can tell the board a little bit more about what the RFP is going to accomplish for us.
Just so everybody understands, Mr. Stedman has done a great deal of work putting together information regarding the, the open area of parcels of land in the town, so please, go ahead, Mr. Stedman. I don't see him there, I think he's muted.
He is muted.
Was he aware he was today?
John, you're on mute.
Yeah, you're on mute.
Okay.
There you are.
I should be, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, this, this started about a year ago, when the Conservation Commission requested approval from the, the funding from CPC to look at nine of our properties, and...
Oh.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
What happened?
Hello?
We're good, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this happened about, started about a year ago, when the Conservation Commission asked the Community Preservation Committee for funding to look at a few of our properties. They came back and said, there's never been such a study done, we really need to look at all of the properties in the town. So that kind of started the ball rolling, and it's been about a year in process to, to put this together with, with input. One of the things that I know is important in this town is additional recreation. I had discussions with Jim, Jim McKay about the study that was done on recreation, I believe in 2014, that really didn't result in anything, so that's been incorporated in this almost exact language from that, as to the citizens' expression of need for that. So it's, it's evolved, we've put together an RFP, it's been twice approved by the Conservation Commission, there've been some minor tweaks, and under Mr. Weiss's leadership, it's gone through, it's gone through council, and is now, I think, a, a very professional, comprehensive document that presents the case very well, and is clear what it is and what it is not, and the objectives. So that's, that's kind of the background and where we are at this point. The one thing I will add to that is, we're, we're looking, we're really trying to get this done as, as quickly as possible. We cannot get or even approach seriously the Community Preservation Commission for any support and funding until we have three bids, according to their, their procedures. So we, we very much want to get this on the street and out, so hopefully, you know, we, we'd like to have them reserve a warrant for funding this in the spring meeting, and if we're able to get this out in the next week or two, we should have the bids back in time to know the dollars and see where we go from there. It'll take, it'll take the consultants that we send this to probably between four and five weeks to really go through this and come back with a meaningful proposal, and I've gotten that, that feedback from, from Beta, that that is a quick, four weeks is a quick time, but it is a doable time for people to send in a proposal. That's kind of, in a nutshell, where we are, are there any questions?
Okay, I will say I've been briefed on this, I've gone through a lot of information that John has collected, he's done an enormous amount of work looking at the various sites throughout the town, he's written up a very fine RFP in coordination with Bob and others, so it looks like we have something that makes some sense to go out, so I'll open it to the board members to ask questions.
Well, I had the opportunity of reading this in draft form a while back, and it looked very well-written at that time. I guess the other piece that came up, the municipal use, I think that's an important piece of it, not just the Council on Aging that was mentioned, but I think at our last meeting, Jim McKay mentioned treatment plants for sewage is a possible need, and that's going to be more of a need, because everything seems to roll back to sewage in this town. So if we can do those pocket treatment plants, is that right, pocket?
Packet, I think, is.
Pocket?
Packet or packet?
Pocket.
Packet.
So, I mean, just, just making sure we keep that in mind, too, but the municipal use piece is important, too, to identify, because I think that's going to become more and more important.
I would absolutely concur, the whole point is, it's a broad enough RFP, that it's designed to try to meet many of the needs of the town, so.
Yeah, and the potential sale or development is an item that keeps coming up of how to fund, because a sale or, sale or development by the town of a parcel can either fund affordable housing, or it can fund other needed municipal, you know, wants or desires or needs.
Right, and that's part of what we have to look at here, and what can we do on some of the parcels, please go ahead, Eric.
So I was involved in some of these meetings where it was discussed that the project scope should be expanded to all of the town-owned properties, which is a fantastic idea to get that information back.
Yeah.
So I do think this is a great project, thought was great that they proposed it. My biggest question is the document or email we have from February 25th, 2022, in the packet. It's about, it's the same topic, but it's asking the board for information on three specific questions, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure if now is the time to dive into those, or if we're just approving the RFP right now.
I have to be honest, I got that this afternoon.
Yeah, this is, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
This is a, an email or a memo from the Community Preservation Committee, asking some questions related to the project, connected to possible funding, at least of a portion of the project, from the Community Preservation Committee, and yes, we, we just saw this today.
Okay.
It's certainly something that Mr. Weiss and I, and certainly Mr. Stedman, will be looking at and discussing over the next several weeks, and.
But we don't have to act upon that?
We don't have to act upon these this evening, they're basically indicating before they will commit support, funding support to the project, they would like answers to these items, and again, we, we, we are working on these, we do have some of these, but we do need some more background research in order to answer these effectively, so this is, for tonight, this is for your information, and I'm sure Mr. Weiss will be coming back before the board at some point within the next, you know, month or so to further discuss these items.
Yeah, I would say the three main questions here in this memo really will be answered once we send out the RFP and we get it back from prospective contractors.
Is that 200,000 that's referenced in this email, the cost of the study we're talking about, estimated cost, or is that for maintenance and other things also?
No, that, that is for the cost.
Just for the study? I thought so, but then I read down further and it said, you know, will funds be provided and implemented?
Yeah, right.
And I wasn't sure if that was rolled in that 200, because we don't know we have to fund, maintain, or anything until we do the study.
Right.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Exactly. So, okay, if there are no more questions, I'll ask the audience, if anyone in the audience has any questions.
John has his hand raised.
Oh, John, do you have a?
No.
Okay, in which case?
Yes.
Take a vote from the board.
Number two, in, in their, the letter, talks about the recreation, I think that's addressed pretty well in the, the RFP, there's, there's quite, there are several paragraphs that directly relate to that as one of the core things in the study, so I think that one will be covered, as, as Bob said, as the proposals come back in.
Right, right, no, it definitely is covered, I remember reading it in the study to be, to be performed, so we should get information on that. In which case, I'll take a motion from the board.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve the RFP for Town-Owned Land Inventory. So do we need more than that?
Is it submission of the RFP, or?
Yes, I would, I would recommend the board vote to authorize submission of the RFP upon, upon final approval by town council, as to form.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the, submission of the RFP, subject to final approval by town council for form.
Perfect, second, thank you.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to recommend approval of the submission of the RFP, pending approval of town council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Go forth, go ye forward, and conquer.
All right, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm going to say, John has put a lot of effort into this.
Go back to Long Springs and enjoy the 75-degree weather. Go back to Long Springs and, uh, enjoy the 75-degree weather.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to underscore what you said about John's work is, is he's done a tremendous amount of work on this, a lot of research, and he's provided, uh, a lot of, uh, leadership, which is very important to getting these things through.
Yeah, it's excellent. So again, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next item is, "Approve Contract With Kleinfelder For Engineering Construction Oversight Of The De Angelis Water Treatment Plant PFAS Upgrades." So I'm gonna start by asking Mr. McKay, and I think it's Kirsten, is that correct?
Kirsten.
Good. Good to see you.
Hi.
Both? Sorry. Jim, I didn't mean to...
Yes, that's all right.
May I ask one question before we begin?
Yes.
On the news, I saw them talking about PFAS, but they were calling it PFOS. What's the right way to say this?
Uh, PFAS is the class of chemicals. Some people say PFOS or PFOS, which is a single...
Oh, so PFAS is what we're talking about.
I'm gonna go broader, I'm gonna go with the PFAS. Thank you. Because I wasn't sure if the entire national news was saying it wrong, and I knew something they did turn...
We'll be testing for PFOS next year.
Yeah, there are a whole series of chemicals associated with this.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just a sec, because I know you wanted to do a PowerPoint.
I have a few update slides.
So I think the best way to do that, Maureen, do you have the slides, um, or is it best for...
Bear with me one sec.
Okay.
And Kirsten, if you would bring the microphone over to you, I think it would be helpful.
So, Mr. Chairman, I can start, we'll be, uh, I'll give you the, and turn it over to Kirsten quickly and Mike. So we have two articles in front of us, uh, and we're gonna combine both of them because we're looking for approval for two contracts, one with the engineering firm and one with the developer that's gonna build the tr- uh, treatment plant. We've reviewed this both with, uh, the town administrator, the finance director, myself, the DPW superintendent, who's gonna oversee the construction phase of, I mean, Kirsten will explain, you know, the big drop in engineering services. Um, when we got this project, you know, we had the, uh, an estimated amount of $5.6 million, and as the bids came in, we all know that the, the construction aspect of it was, uh, five point, say, five point two million, it was 5.1 million, 700-something dollars. Um, that left us with very little, uh, contingency, and most importantly, left us with no, uh, engineering service oversight for the project. So we did go back and we looked at, uh, what was the best way to keep this project semi-on, on track and, and time-wise and, most importantly, cost-wise. Um, and then we came up, this is the plan that we did come up with. Again, this was done through the town administrator, myself, uh, the DPW superintendent and the finance director, working with Kleinfelder, Kirsten, and Betsy. Uh, last week, we had several conversation and meetings over this. I did send this out to the contracts to, uh, Town Council for review, and I received both back, uh, that they approved of, you know, the way the contracts were written as form. That doesn't mean that, you know, once we get everything signed, both the town administrator and the finance director have to review it and sign it before they'll, um, with your approval naturally, um, before it actually goes forward. So I think I'm gonna turn it over to Kirsten, um, she'll give you an, an update on, you know, the costs and where we came up with, um, and what's the best way to move forward.
Can I ask you exactly, exactly what you guys are looking to look, see there?
We're looking for the PowerPoint presentation.
So that, that actually, I think, was in the packet right at the beginning of the, um, the next, uh, agenda item, uh, 039?
Oh, 039?
Yeah, it's right at the beginning of that, um...
How did you move on to 039?
That's all right.
They're kind of, that's supposed to be the same project, so...
It's all combined.
We move quickly around here, Maureen.
There you go.
There you go, there you go.
Go up.
There you go, go back, go back.
Up.
I can't read that page, but it's that...
Keep going, it's something like the PowerPoint.
56.
Page 56. Can you expand that, uh, Maureen, to cover the whole page? The whole screen, if possible?
Yeah, it's better.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Sure. Okay. Great, so, um, yeah, we just thought we'd provide a very brief, not, not too much time for everybody, but an update on the project, as Jim explained. Um, this, just for anybody who's new to the town or new to this project, um, this is to provide water purification for wells one and two by upgrading the facility at the De Angelis Treatment Plant. If you could move forward to the next slide?
Next slide?
Can you page down?
Just click on the one on the left, there you go.
Okay, great. So, yes, wells one and two, um, have been offline ever since elevated levels of PFAS were detected, and there is a lot of good infrastructure at the De Angelis site. The, the photo on the right is the existing facility, which will remain. Um, that is all infrastructure that we, we will keep and just continue to utilize. Um, in order to provide the treatment facility, we'll be, um, demolishing an old garage that's, that's very rundown and using that space, um, to build the new facility. Please, uh, go to the next page. So, um, these, the purification units are granular activated carbon units, they're large filters, um, they're like 10 to 12 feet diameter and about, um, 12 feet tall on the right there of this page, um, so, you know, pretty substantial metal building will be, um, designed, has been designed to cover those. So the design was completed at the end of December, and we, um, put that out to bid. We opened bids on February 10th, and, um, next page, please. So three contractor bids were received, um, because you can see the range in price was vast. Um, this kind of reflects the difficult, um, environment in terms of bidding and trying to estimate pricing, so we, you know, we estimated pricing as best we can with the available information we have at the time, and, um, so our construction budget estimate in, at the end of September was 4.94, I believe. So coming in a little higher than that, um, as Jim described, we needed to think about how we could move forward on the project, given the appropriation that you had. So three companies bid on it, um, Winston Builders is a low bidder, we're, you know, familiar with that company, they're very well-known for this type of work, which is a very good thing. It's a little bit specialized, um, just a general contractor without a lot of experience in treatment facilities is, is not ideal, so they, they definitely specialize in this work, and my colleagues have worked with them and other engineers that I know and respect, um, they all, we checked references and they all said very good things, so we're, we're glad to be, um, working with Winston Builders. So, next slide?
I'm sorry, what was the total appropriation we voted?
Five point six. Five point six, yeah, we'll, we'll break that down here. So looking at the project as a whole, um, with the Winston Builders bid, again, through discussions that we had with Jim, Mike, Carol, we talked about, you know, going into awarding the contract, you wanna carry some contingency, um, you know, 5% would be our, our bare minimum recommended, so we, you know, collectively, uh, settled on 8.5% would be a healthy amount just in case anything arises during construction. And then the engineering, um, part of it, um, the work there, what that involves is basically, um, we have all, you know, structural engineers, geotechnical engineers, electrical engineers, all the people that went, that worked on the design of the facility, um, we work together with the contractor, sends in submittals of each component of the drawings and specifications that we need to review, so, you know, the specs book is about 1,000 pages tall, 1,000 pages long, and, you know, there's 50 drawing sets, it's a lot of material that the professional engineers need to review, approve. Um, we also will provide site visits, um, we will be inspecting specific components of the work. So when we first put in a budget for engineering services during construction, to be conservative, we carried, I believe, full-time, you know, we would provide every-day oversight. So in talking with Jim and, and Dave Romachi, we understand his capabilities and his experience in this area of being sort of the day-to-day si- eyes on the site. So I think we've come to a great solution where, um, we, our technical engineers will provide site visits, Dave will be sort of the day-to-day person, and then we have a task budgeted to support him, you know, because he does have a full-time job. Other responsibilities, um, we'll be working with closely with him every week, every day, talking to him about, okay, you know, if he can't be the eyes and ears on site that day, we'll send someone out to cover, um, so that, you know, we came to a solution that was affordable, but also provided the, the level of technical oversight you want for a, a project like this. So that, uh, so our revised budget for engineering services is 483,0938. Um, so that rounds up to a $6.1 million total project cost compared to your appropriation. Um, that's where, I don't know if Mike wanted to say anything else on this, but, you know, the thought was, um, to move forward with your existing 5.6 appropriation, you would award that contract to Winston, the full amount, 5.175889, and then, you know, we wrote our scope and fee with a not-to-exceed interim limit, 'cause it, you won't cover the whole, um, rev- the whole, the whole fee, but in order to get to town meeting and then beyond that, it, that's what the, uh, additional funding would go to, the contingency for Winston's contract, well, not for the contract, but the contingency that you, you keep in reserve in case something comes up, um, and then the engineering, the remainder of the engineering services, so. So our contract has a $150,000 cap, um, to be amended after town meeting. Let's see, so, right, does anybody have any questions about that so far?
There was no contingency built into Winston's contract?
So when we, when we do our, um, engineer's estimate of, of the construction, we do carry contingency, usually we start high, like 30%,
Right.
and then drop it down to about 15% for the, you know, we get close to 100% design. Um, so we were, the number that we used carried a 15% contingency, but again, it just, you know, the bids were just higher.
But Winston didn't submit a contingency, saying this is the total bid cost?
Yeah, that's, they bid on all the work, you know, they don't add in their own, I mean, they price what the documents are, so it's more just for your protection, you know, I, we don't feel there's anything major that we would expect to come up, but just one never knows.
So basically, you're saying you'll work with us to get us through to town meeting, but at least we can continue with construction and start the whole process?
Winston's ready to go, they're like, as soon as the papers are signed, we're gonna start sending you guys submittals to review so that we can get out on the site as soon as possible.
Excellent.
Right, so, Mr....
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, so, so that, you know, for us is the most important thing, is to move forward.
Right.
And we do have sufficient, uh, funding authorization to sign a contract, um, with Winston. Uh, they're only required to hold that bid price for, I believe it's 45 days?
I think it's 30 days.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, it's 30 days.
I mean, they're usually, if, if there's something, you know, logistical holding you up, that, I've never seen a contractor pull it, but you do wanna...
I think based on the background of the contractor, we shouldn't be overly concerned about that, but at the same time, you see the difference in price between the lowest bidder and the second lowest bidder, it's not something to take lightly, and so, uh, we are strongly recommending that the board authorize, um, the approval of the contract with Winston as well as, um, $150,000 not-to-exceed time and materials contract with Kleinfelder to get the project moving. That will certainly carry us, you know, well past the town meeting, and we could come back and, and discuss, uh, the, the rest of the contract with Kleinfelder as they presented at that time.
Excellent.
Um, as you can see, the 500,000, 440,000 of that basically represents the contingency.
Right.
This is not, in theory, that much different than what we need to do in the DPW project where we had enough money for the project, but not with the contingency.
Absolutely.
Um, so we're certainly hopeful that we won't need a lot of that $5,000, you know, at the end of the day, but we need to have it there because of, if we do need it, we can't wait six weeks for a town meeting authorization and come back and get it.
We don't have any projects typically, typically we go in with a 10% or so contingency, so this makes a lot of sense, but the fact is that Kleinfelder is willing to work with us, and we've had a long-term relationship, and it's understood that we can't, we can propose it, but we can't do anything until town meeting, at which point we'll have, hopefully, the agreement to move forward on this. Mr. McKay, do you have any comments or...
Sure, so I, I, I think the biggest comment that I have to make is, um, I would look at the scope and work that Kleinfelder's agreed upon as part of the $483,938. That's exactly what, uh, during the DPW project, I mean, they're still gonna be there for structural inspections, they're gonna be there for when we build the, you know, dig the 12-foot trench to make sure that everything, uh, there's scope and fee of, uh, looking and communicating with, um, the Conservation Commission, meetings coming back here maybe every other month, or is at the will that you want them to come back. Um, so it's, it's not much different, the only thing they eliminated was the OPM, you know, that 300-something thousand was the data, the daily inspection, and you know that that worked out quite well with the, uh, DPW project.
Right, now, Miss, you're obviously committing Mr. Romachi to do a lot of work here. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes. Yes, we can, you know, I, I, it, it's, we won't need the, the force behind Dave to, you know, because we're not gonna be doing any of the, uh, construction work on-site, um, that we did at the DPW project.
Right.
We may add the paving as part of the contract, but that, that, that'll come later.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I had a great conversation with Dave after we talked, just to say, "Dave, this isn't gonna make you quit your job at Millis, right? Lay this on you again." He said, "No, I know."
Exactly.
He's like, "I kind of expected that."
You're comfortable working, you're comfortable working with Dave?
Absolutely, no, he's...
He seems to meet all the criteria, I know he did a superb job...
Yep.
...on the latest project, so that all looks good. I'm gonna open it, any comments or questions? Aaron?
Craig, Craig had something on deck there.
Not, not exactly, but I just wanna say Dave did a great job with the other project, super comfortable using him on this one if he's willing to do it, and it sounds like he really enjoyed it, so I think it's, uh, not just willing to, but eager to.
But we'll find out how much he enjoys it as the project goes forward.
This honestly, to me, seems a little more straightforward than the last one, just it's a smaller footprint.
Yep.
And, uh, less things to hook up.
Do we have any comments then from the audience? If not, then I'll take a motion to recommend approval of the contract with Winston Builders and with Kleinfelder, uh, for the various amounts, with the understanding that in the case of the contingent, I guess it's the contingency, I guess Kleinfelder, we're agreeing to $150,000 cap at this time.
I'll try it. I move that we approve and sign the contract with Winston Builders...
Allow the town administrator.
Allow the town administrator to sign the contract with Winston Builders in, in amount of $5,100... That amount?
Let's do two motions, second.
Two motions, okay, good, that's good, okay. Second, so we're good on that one.
Okay.
We'll do them separately.
Then seconded, okay, it's moved and seconded to, uh, permit the town administrator to sign a contract with Winston Builders in the amount of $5,175,889 for the construction of the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant facility for PFAS removal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Now I'll take a, what is it, the contingency?
No.
No, it's just 150 for Kleinfelder.
150 for Kleinfelder.
So I, I move that we approve a contract with Kleinfelder not to exceed $150,000 for engineering services.
And with the understanding that we will take in front of town meeting, um, a vote to provide the remainder of the, uh, $483,938.
Or I'd like to say we come up with a plan, well, it's not part of the motion, but we'll have to come up with a plan for the remainder of the amount.
Right. So...
Oh, I said second earlier, yeah.
Okay.
I cut you off when I thought you got far enough.
Okay.
As we just discussed, it's been moved and seconded, and we'll allow, again, for the town administrator to sign that contract. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so you've got two contracts to be able to sign.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just one more item.
Just before, I want to make one comment, and that is, I don't think you'd have this kind of unanimity if it weren't for the work you've done in the past, and, understand, this is not what I would consider a normal way of proceeding, but I think you've built a lot of trust, and you come with the recommendation of our director, so I think it's very important that you understand that's the way we're proceeding. So I think it's very important that you understand that's the way we're proceeding.
I really appreciate that, and I, I, you know, we're very excited to work on the project and move forward with, you know, building this facility for the town, and I think you guys have done a great job of being ahead of the curve, really, so I think that's.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Just a, just an item, Mr. Chairman, just also with this, we'll be requesting that the board authorize the addition of the article for the town meeting to authorize the additional five-hundred-thousand dollars for the project. So just, so that'll be part of the discussion for the warrant later in the.
Which we have that language already written up.
Which we did, we did just get that this afternoon, so I do have that, yeah.
Okay, we'll be getting to that momentarily.
We'll let Winston know that, that the vote was taken, and I'm sure they'll be excited, and we'll, we'll get moving, so.
Okay.
We'll update you frequently.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We are slightly ahead of schedule, Mr. Chairman.
We are, well, we have one last item here, if we can do it, is the Permanent Building Committee, the Council on Aging Cost Estimates.
Well, that's the, um, yes, that's the Permanent Building Committee, and I, I don't know if they're ready yet, they were told around eight-thirty, so.
Well, you know, I mean.
See, Mike, I told you.
I know, but they may be ready, they may be ready.
My last words to you was eight-thirty, you're kidding me.
You were, you were the true optimist.
Well, you never know, but I see Mr. Clacco is online, so I think that it comes to him as to whether we proceed, so.
We're into Mr. Clacco.
Mr. Clacco.
My advice to the committee is that you not leave to get a beer, because we are ready.
You know, you just threw a monkey wrench in our whole evening, what can I say?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Mr. Clacco, please go forward.
I would like to share my screen, if that's possible.
We're working on that.
You should be able to.
You should be also.
All right, do you see an agenda on your screen?
We do.
All right, great. Good evening, everyone, Wayne Clacco, Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. I have David Pollak, uh, I can see him, so I'm sure you can as well, from Abacus Architects' principal, who has been assisting us in the senior center evaluation for a couple of years now, unfortunately, because of, extended because of COVID. What we'd like to do tonight is to bring you up to date on where that evaluation stands and what the steps are going forward from here, assuming that the select board gives us their approval to proceed. So, um, I'm going to be taking the first two slides. We're going to give you what I would consider to be an executive summary. I know that some of you have more familiarity with where we are than others, but I thought we would give you a, more of a high-level review, and then leave time for you to, for us to answer any questions that you may have. Does that comport with your expectations for this evening?
You have the floor, proceed here with.
All right, so you have the agenda in front of you. I'm going to be bringing you up to date on the, on the status of the project, a meeting that took place on February eighteenth, conducted by Diane Germain and Jim McJeffrey, with Mike Kozinski and his direct reports, Eddie Keough from the Council on Aging, the library director, and the, and the rec department director. And this is, uh, these are materials from that meeting that took over an hour and a half, so we're going to give you an expedited version of that. Then David Pollak is going to get into specifics on the design, and we're going to talk about the cost. So, uh, that's our, that's our intention. With that, uh, bringing you up to speed on where we, how we come to be where we're at today. In two thousand and nineteen, the town approved funding for this feasibility study. Abacus, with input from the Council on Aging, was selected by the Permanent Building Committee in part based on not only their design, but their strong experience with getting community input and assessing the needs of a community. And as you'll see, the, the programming, which David will talk about, is the foundation for everything that we do that results in the bricks and mortar, and the square footage, and the cost, and everything that flows from that. And he'll be happy to talk about that. In two thousand and twenty, we sat down with the COA to talk about not only their existing, but their desired programming intentions. We met with, and visited the Medfield Senior Center. We conducted initial design reviews with that group, and then we had additional sessioning with space needs with, with the Council on Aging and Abacus. Two thousand and twenty-one, again, because of COVID, this really proceeded at a slower pace than we expected. The, the working group met with the Board of Directors and board members of the rec department. I'm not sure if there was anybody from the library, and, and certainly the Council on Aging. And at that meeting on the twenty-eighth, we shared with that group the preliminary cost estimates that Abacus had obtained from their cost estimator. And so here we are now, in two thousand and twenty-two, ready to go to the community, share the results of that process, including the cost, ask the, the town whether or not they're interested in funding a project that deals with the needs not only of the seniors in town, which make up almost a third of the population. I think from the two thousand and twenty annual report, there are twenty-five-hundred residents in Millis over the age of sixty, make, and that makes up twenty-eight percent of the population, so. The current COA and combined rec and library programs meet only a fraction of the needs of that group. And so there certainly is a need there, and that's been the subject of what we've, we've been evaluating. And now the question is, what would that look like in terms of a facility, and whether or not the town will fund it? So without any further ado, I will turn it over to David Pollak.
Good evening. So, uh, this document, which I certainly don't expect you to be able to read the text on, is the foundation, as Wayne said, this is the program document, of all of the, um, the designs and the, and the, the cost estimates. And it was really developed, as Wayne just told us, over the course of, of both two thousand and twenty, working with the Council on Aging, and then two thousand and twenty-one, bringing in the library and the recreation department to look comprehensively at both the facilities in place and the needs to supplement those facilities for all of these town, uh, town services, town departments. So the green is Council on Aging, and that's the core senior center program built on top of the current programming, and also the, the deficits in the current programming because of the inadequacy of the space, you know, below you, where you sit today, or this evening. And it's done space by space, and then the yellow is the supplemental program for both recreation and, um, and the library. And reading across is where there's synergies, where spaces could serve two or even three of the different programs. So let's, let's go on to the next slide. So that program document then was organized into these two parallel building programs. These are really the same building program, on the left and the right, but in different places. On the left, the partial renovation and addition of VMB, and then on the right, reconfigured at Cassidy Farm for a single-story building. But in either case, the net result is about a fifteen-thousand gross square foot building. And you can see that at the top, fourteen-eight fifty-five, or fifteen thousand square feet. So essentially about the same amount of space to serve the same program, largely identical program. Except that at the bottom, option two A, it would be to add a gymnasium at Cassidy, because that's not included in either case. So in the program on the left, that doesn't include the existing gym, which wouldn't need any work at VMB, but would just, is just there for the use. At the right, a gymnasium is added, a slightly larger gymnasium. After a lot of review, the decision was made to, to size it for a, a regulation basketball court. And I think one of the real influences to that were that anything smaller than that would only accommodate a single pickleball court. But once you get to this size basketball court with some safety space around it, you can actually put three pickleball courts next to each other. So this would be a multi-use gymnasium that could have three pickleball courts, a basketball court, a tennis court, volleyball, whatever, whatever you would want. So, uh, so that's the, the add-on. Let's, let's go to the next slide.
Why am I? Is that the right slide, David?
Yes, thank you. So, so here are the three, uh, the three different designs. At the top, the VMB, so on the, in the, on the right middle, maybe I can, I can, I think I can turn on a cursor here, yep. Can you see my, my mouse now?
No, they're, they're only seeing mine.
Oh, okay, well, at any rate, the, the gym is fairly easy to see, the large, single-story building that Wayne's showing us there. And on the left is an addition, the sort of red wall part is a, a high-ceiling dining hall, a large multipurpose room. And then the part behind it is two stacked floors, and we'll look at the plan in a bit. Between the gym and the addition is the part that is partially renovated for, for these uses, community center, but it, it doesn't include all the space in that building, which is also, I mean, doesn't include any on the third floor, and it doesn't include the far side of the second floor. In the middle is a, a design, a relatively straightforward design for a, um, a single-story community center at Cassidy Farm, and then on the bottom, the same building, but with the gymnasium added on the left. And, and these are concept plans, the, the window patterns and roof patterns are all presented in, in a relatively abstract way to describe the volume of space and to get a cost estimate, but they're not, they're not, I mean, you know, sort of the design of what the building would look like, that would all be off in the future if a building were decided to be pursued. So that's, that's all three. The next slide brings us more closely to look at the plans of VMB. So parking is expanded, there's a little optimization of the parking on the main lot, and then, and then an additional lot is configured up at the northeast corner. And then along that section of Park Street, there's a drop-off that would, you'd be coming left to right, so you have a right-hand pedestrian, you know, passenger drop-off, and then a covered passage that would lead you down to the entry, down to the entry to the, the senior center on the lower level. And that would all, there's also a paired entry on the, directly opposite that to the main parking lot. So if you're handicapped, that, that entrance where Wayne's cursor is now is not a handicap entrance, but that's stairway, but then the handicap parking is all conveniently located near the drop-off on the other side. And this is significant amount of additional parking, but also there are other parking areas nearby to serve the, the, the schoolteachers, and it, this is kind of where we arrived at, with a lot of back and forth, to balance adding more parking and having adequate parking adjacent to VMB, but also preserving open space and trees. And in the plans, we had originally developed a larger footprint, single-story addition, and ultimately, the decision was made to promote this two-story addition, partly for the compactness, but I think largely because it has much more long-term utility and flexibility for the whole building, because it integrates with the main level of the, or the second level, uh, middle level of VMB, so that you can move from the, up the main stairs into the main entrance, and then down the corridor to your right, you could come right into the addition. And if you look on the first-floor plan, it says on the upper right, you can see that you come through the corridor out of VMB onto a sort of a curvy balcony, looking down into the dining hall. And then there are three large multipurpose rooms, but in fact, it's one, uh, one extremely, or one very long multipurpose room with folding acoustic kind of classroom partitions. So it can be broken up for different kinds of classes, or exercise classes, or meetings, but it also can be opened up the whole way. And the plan there is to have a, a sports floor or an exercise kind of floor, so that it's really completely multipurpose. And then there, all the rest of the program is, is arranged. On the lower level, all of the offices are on the backside or the parking lot side in that whole block there. And that includes the rec office. So i- if you look at where that staircase entrance is, right below Wayne's cursor, you can see a large reception desk that would serve all the facilities, and then on, directly on the left is the rec office, and then on the right are all the Council on Aging offices. So it's all gathered together, serving the, the combined facility. Okay, next slide. So some views, on the right, the courtyard with some sun, sun shades, and also, you can't, can't really quite see, but over on the right is a rain cover that gets you all the way to the entrance from the drop-off. And then down below, a view, right where Wayne's cursor is, the image below that is looking back out those windows. So what's in, yeah, that, that image, and there's the entrance to the covered walkway. And the, what was the classroom above that space, the floor has been taken out, so there's kind of a double-height lounge there, entrance lounge that, that's shown in that picture, looking out at the, at the courtyard. And then on the left is the large dining hall multipurpose room in the, in the addition. And then off to the left of that, under that three-part multipurpose room we were talking about on the last slide, sort of behind those, those white walls, if you will, is a, um, a kind of a gym. Could have all kinds, different kinds of exercise equipment or whatever.
And this, this kind, this greeting area here where I have the cursor, this vaulted, uh, double-ceiling height is where the, uh, we would be taking the rec department office and the building department office to open those up to create this space.
Right, or actually, the, I think the building department office is that, is where the. Or actually, I think the building department office is where those windows are looking down into it, which is now a craft room or multipurpose room or whatever. But yeah, rec is above that, isn't that right? And then below it is the council on aging's main meeting room or something. So again, we're lowering the elevation out in the courtyard so that what's now a basement with high windows has these floor-to-ceiling glass and is now a ground-level room. So we're essentially getting council on aging out of the basement by wrapping both the addition and these rooms around a beautiful garden that's at the same level. So this is the schematic for Cassidy Farm. You can see a driveway entrance off Exchange Street, whatever size parking lot is desired. Here, it's 98 parking spaces. It obviously doesn't need to be as big as at V M B, because it's not also serving town offices and the building department. There's plenty of developable space behind the building and to the south, where it says outdoor activities and gardens. And if you see coming in the drop-off and entrance, on the far left of the plan is that same large, high-ceiling dining room. And then kind of a central atrium courtyard with different sort of hangout spaces. I mean, it's indoor space, but there's different uses in that area, and lounges and sitting areas. And then next to the entrance, sort of below the words "drop-off" is where the whole office and administration suite is, and then a series of multipurpose rooms and other support services. And it's a single-story building. So on the next slide, I think we have -- oh, we'll see. I think we have images. Yep. So there's, you know, a massing of the building on the upper left. On the upper right is that dining hall multipurpose room. And then on the lower right is, you know, a kind of a simple image of that central atrium space with different kinds of activities. Reception may be showing under a round skylight there on the left of that image.
And again, the representation here in these elevation drawings is yet to be determined. This is just an initial concept, so don't get hung up on the design at all. We haven't even gotten close to that stage yet.
Right. Now, these are massing diagrams.
Shall I go on?
Yes, please. So here you see that the gym is just tacked on the end, but it works out actually quite well, you know, for a number of reasons, including that you can have a separate entrance and operate the gym with the -- the community center could be locked. So if you see that sort of little courtyard between the community center and the gym, there's an entrance there, and then bathrooms, locker rooms that could support the gym on the left in the corner of the community center. And so the gym could, you know, could be sort of sectioned off and operated independently without necessarily having the whole community center open or staffed. Again, it's just a diagram for cost estimating purposes, but it's a reasonably logical layout. And again, slides that we've seen, and then here's a box that would be a gym. So again, it hasn't been highly developed. It's not a design. Could do all sorts of wonderful things with, you know, simple trusses or different kinds of whatever. I mean, this is just a box at this point, but as you'll see, a not inexpensive box. So here are the costs. And all of this detail is the kind of summary page from a 39-page detailed cost estimate developed by PM and C, our consulting cost estimator, who we delivered all the drawings to and who put this together. And this is for the renovation addition at V M B. And I think if you scroll, show us just a little more of the top. Yeah. So most of this cost, you can see, is in the -- well, it's sort of the three lines that get down to that subtotal of 6,482. So you've got 6,280 square feet of renovation at a per-square-foot cost. And this is trade cost. The way the cost estimate is developed is that all the general contractor markups are lower down. This is just for, you know, people who swing tools, if you will, materials and labor. So you've got -- yes.
Just for everyone's purpose here, the trade cost is prevailing wage.
Yes, absolutely. The assumption is chapter 149 construction, although it could be chapter 149A, construction management, which I believe you used for your elementary school project.
We did.
Yeah. And but I don't know that that's been -- I don't think that there's a kind of a cost bump for that, but order of magnitude, we're, you know, we can set that aside. So as you can see, 6,000 square feet at 200 bucks a foot and 8,000 square feet at 400 bucks a foot approximately, that the renovation is significantly lower cost than the addition. Now, that's not always true. In fact, often, if you were to take a school building, like V M B was, and renovate it complete for a community center, we would generally expect the cost to be about the same for new construction and renovation. But in this case, it's significantly less, because we're not doing any plumbing work. We're, you know, like, so much of that part of V M B that's being reutilized, the walls can remain in place, and there is just not that heavy a lift to -- because of the size of the rooms and the placement of the masonry walls, and the staircase is already there. We're not building an elevator. And all of the new plumbing and kitchen and all of that work is in the addition. So it's a relatively lower cost for the existing renovation piece. And essentially, all of this cascades down with an assumption of construction start of, I think, fall of 2023, if I remember correctly, is when we escalated this to. Yeah, there it says right in the middle, subtotal, fall 2023. So that's assuming a construction start in year and a half, which, again, if you postponed it till later, you just would need more escalation, which is quite high in the market today, as I'm sure you're aware of. And then that's a total development cost for the project of 12.5. That gets you from the construction. So this is assuming that you'd sign a construction bid for $9,077,000, and that by the time you were done, you know, with the project, with design fees and owner's project manager fees and, you know, furniture fixtures and equipment and everything else, it would be a -- you'd need a funding of $12,005,000. So that's the total project budget. Okay, let's go over to Cassidy. So Cassidy is 14.5, about $2 million more without the gym. And that's basically because you're paying 400 bucks a foot for all 15,000 square feet. That's the whole story in that top line. And then if we add the gym, there's the 14.5. And then the next slide, we'll add the gymnasium, which is the same building, but with about a $4 million, $4 million or $4,300,000 add-on for the 7,000-square-foot basketball court. And then I think we just have a summary table. And then there's a kind of a next step slide, which is kind of back to Wayne, although we may want to pause and take questions. All right. Wayne, you're on.
All right. So as we discussed at the beginning, programming, what you've seen here is the design for conducting the programs that the COA, the rec department, and the council on aging would like to -- they're currently providing, and the programs that they would like to provide for not only the senior population, but then there is also a question of whether or not this should be an exclusively senior-only facility, or whether or not it should be available for what we would call multi-generational use. And so we have laid out the options here for presenting to the citizens of Milis to determine what their appetite is and what their preference is for either of those options. And so our intention is to present this material a little more further developed to the community and gain that feedback to where we come with a consensus solution for presenting a town meeting for funding, to determine whether or not the town will in fact support either the building of a new facility at Cassidy Farm or the Reno addition at the V M B. And we're getting ready to do that. We have another session with the council on aging, I think on March 10th, to gain additional feedback from that group. But our intention is to move forward and determine what the community would like to do, if anything. I will tell you that the seniors have been in the basement of the V M B since its construction in 1999. It is inadequate for even their current programming, much less meeting the needs of 2,500 people if it is even just a senior-only center. So that's how we got to where we are. We're ready to take the next step, and we're here tonight to get your feedback.
Well, I'm going to open it in a moment to certainly the select board members to question. I think we have to digest this a little bit also, it's just being presented. I am concerned as to how we get the message out to the seniors in a reasonable fashion, because we don't always seem to get to these folks easily. So I want to make sure that however we choose to do it, we get to as many seniors as possible so that they can get involved, be aware of it, and get feedback from them. I don't want just a few small little groups where they come in and say, "Oh, yeah, I like it, I don't like it," whatever. But I think it's important somehow to get this information out as broadly as possible. At any rate, I have a lot of other things I'd like to ask questions about on this, but I'm going to open it to the two of you to start with.
Okay. Could I just -- I just want to clarify one thing. So we see two main options. Second option has a Part A. So were you guys saying that the idea is that these two and a half options would be proposed to the general public with the question whether or not any of these would be strictly senior or community?
Yes, correct. Now, I will tell you, though, that the V M B option essentially will serve both purposes, would serve both a multi-generational and a senior option. The Cassidy option, the difference there is the gym, which then could be used by a broader age group.
Okay. So really, the V M B option would be more open and all-encompassing, whereas Cassidy Farm may be something that would be specific to seniors, depending on, you know, which way the town decides to go.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Are there any differences that you've come up with in operating costs for these various facilities? For example, the cost not just of electricity and HVAC, but staffing and so forth? Have you looked at that and seen, determined if there are any significant differences between these various options?
We have not. I would -- my immediate reaction to that is the operating cost, whether or not it's not only just utilities, but certainly the staffing part is, I think, beyond the scope of this study.
I bring it up only because if one requires more full-time staff than another, and I don't know that it does or anything else, obviously, all these costs have to be worked in, because those are continuing costs, maintenance, whatever. Just asking, I'm not saying it's bad.
I think that we can honestly assume that either of these options are going to require significantly more cost than we have right now, because right now, we have a program that is less than what's desirable, understaffed, underserved. And I think in a brand-new facility, no matter what you build, is going to cost significantly more than we're spending today.
But we need to get an idea of what those costs are, is all I'm saying. We all know it's going to be more. I mean, we found that with the police station, fire station.
Yeah, I mean, there's some with the police and the library on utilities, but I think beyond just utilities, you're talking about significantly more square footage and program staff that are going to be needed. So I think that this isn't in a vacuum. I think it's a building design for 12.5 to 18.8 million, in that range, plus, pick a number for COA staff increases, you know, whether that's 50, 100,000 a year operating to staff this. The last thing you want to do is build a $12 million building or a $18.8 million building and have it not used because we don't have the staff to operate it.
I remember we went through a similar discussion at the library when we finally moved it to a single-story building because of costs and so on. I bring it up, not as a showstopper, it's just, it really needs to be factored in, I believe, as part of this. It makes no sense to build a facility and then say, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't realize it was going to cost us 50,000 or 80,000 dollars or more a year," whatever. Whatever that is, and I hate to use a number, because it'll be all wrong, but the point is, we need to consider that upfront.
All right. And if we're talking about additional services, that would be a conversation, do we have a joint operating override which goes in perpetuity to fund this, plus the building override?
Right.
Because I don't want to spend any money on this and not have it be staffed.
Absolutely.
So if this is a direction, and I think it's prudent to consider both of those at the same time. Yeah. And the operational cost is beyond the scope of the PBC. So I think that's on us to try to figure out.
I would agree with you. That's -- I was asking, just to stake on the ground.
And if you recall what we've done with Clyde Brown Project, and all of what you're talking about is absolutely appropriate and should be presented to taxpayers, in my opinion, in a complete package, including the basis of any funding for a capital expenditure, what it would mean for the average-sized home in terms of a tax implication, all of that work is yet to be determined, but certainly necessary as part of a Warren article for funding. But when we did the Clyde Brown Project, we did precisely this exercise, where we said, here are options. We have a renovation option for the existing Clyde Brown School. We have a renovation addition option for them. We have two options for new construction, one in, you know, in slightly different locations. And we asked the public through, I think, five or six different focus groups to weigh in on what their preference was. And that came down to a one selection that we could in fact ask voters to either approve or not. And I think we're -- we've been down this And I think we're, we've been down this road, we're taking advantage of the experience that we already have at this kind of exercise, and I think we're proceeding in a similar and orderly fashion.
Wayne, when you did the focus groups for the schools, on average, how many people attended those focus groups?
Pete, I would say, one was very well-attended. I'd say 70 or so people, I would think, for one of the larger ones. And then the second one, I think, was somewhat less, maybe like 50 people is my recollection. And then we went to other groups. I know we went to the Lions Club, we went to the COA, we went to a number of different groups in town to let them know what was happening and just make them aware before it went to a town meeting.
Great, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
And I think you're absolutely right, Pete. The success of this project, if it is going to go forward, will require the energetic support, not of the Permanent Building Committee. Our job is to present you with the design and the cost, but the people who are most affected by this need to be the advocates to sell this, if you will, to their fellow citizens. So, particularly senior involvement is critical.
Yeah, and I agree somewhat with Wayne saying, I think that, I totally agree that PBC is not the group selling it. Totally agree with that one. That's correct. I think, though, that it's got to be, senior is critical, but I think it's the rest of the community that's got to get behind it. And that really is the first question, I think, needs to be answered. Are we building a senior center or a community center? Because that's the question, whether a 12 and a half million purposely using the lower-dollar amount is a 40-hour-a-week, no weekends building, or is it, you know, open weekends and evenings and everything else that would make it a better use of the money? So, I think that is a key decision that has to be made with the COA before we go forward, and then we can present these three options to the community as which one is more preferable.
I think it's, I think from day one, essentially, that's been an issue, right? And I think we have to recognize that if it's COA-only, it changes the perspective of how we move forward dramatically.
Right.
So, we need the feedback, but the reality is, if we don't, if we are looking for community support from the whole community, we're looking at a community-type of center, but we need that feedback if there's an interest there.
So, in terms of the outreach that you brought up, who, would that be the PBC that would be doing that to solicit the feedback? So, they would need to be, would they be the entity to find a way to get in touch with all the seniors?
But we have to work that out. If, even if the PBC does it, they have to have support from us, and we have to work that out with people who understand it. I know that the last time, Wayne and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you ran some of those sessions, but did we not have other involvement from other committees, or was it just PBC?
No, well, if you recall, the Clyde Brown being the most recent, we had very active participation by the school, not only the school committee, but the parent organizations within the school were extremely active in getting the word out. There was a website, a lot of information was shared on social media. It was, you know, certainly that was a much larger project, but that had, you know, full involvement by, you know, the school folks, the most affected, most interested party. And we would do the same thing here.
Do we have anyone who really understands how to run a focus group or anything like that?
Yeah, Pete, I think that's what we did with the school and also what's happening here, is I think our consultants can run those focus groups for us. We organize them. The PBC organized the school ones, but we had the professional design people, the architects, that actually facilitated. So, Wayne, is that correct, that David's company would be doing a lot of facilitation?
I would look for us to manage some of that, and that's.
I would not manage a focus group. I'd sit back and watch it. I'd let the professionals who do it on a daily basis, the architects, manage it. Maybe we draw.
Yes, we would be looking to David and advocates for that assistance. In fact, it's one of the reasons why we hired them, is their ability to do that. And for the Clyde Brown Project, that was slightly different in that we had been granted a million-dollar funding from the MSBA, Massachusetts School Board Authority, for doing the study. And so, we had the luxury of having an owner's project manager in-house by that time and preliminary design work. And so, they assisted us with those focus groups as well.
Yeah, I would hope that we have people on staff, though, who are familiar with focus groups. I know what the process is, but I don't like the idea of another organization being totally responsible for running them. We need to guide the process, and I think that's very important, so.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I think that the idea between a focus group, because we hire them to do our stuff, to get unbiased views. If the Council on Aging is running a focus group, no matter how good they are, they come in with a bias on it, and you're trying to get a fair, unbiased view of what people are looking at.
I'm looking more at the PBC, but I want to make sure it's structured so that the focus group has the appropriate structure and that we understand what the process is before they move forward. And I'm adamant on that score because I've been involved with them before, and I think that's very important.
I would just say, I think the school one worked out quite well, and that was run by professionals, not by the PBC. We facilitated, picked the days and the dates, and drummed up business, but.
But you should also review the process and make sure that the issues, as you feel they ought to be proposed, meet the needs that you believe. And that's got to be a discussion that's taking place before the focus group actually occurs, and that's a process I am familiar with. Okay, are there any other comments before we open it up to the audience here?
I'm sorry, Wayne, when was the next meeting of the group to discuss this?
We have a meeting, Jim McCaffrey and I are meeting with the COA on the 10th. The Permanent Building Committee is meeting the end of, I think, the third week of March, our normally scheduled meeting where we will be addressing this as well. I'm not sure what the Select Board is looking for in terms of what that focus group will look like. David, perhaps you and I can talk sometime after this meeting and provide some information to this group.
Yeah, and then the goal would be to have this on the November town meeting to meet our construction schedule? Is that the plan?
It is, but I don't, I, with all of the delays that we've had because of the coronavirus, I don't want the schedule to dictate rushing the project. We need to take the time to do this correctly, to get the feedback from our fellow citizens, make informed decisions, and provide that, you know, sound information. We've got a little more work to do for, as I said, refining the numbers. These are, we need to make sure that they're accurate for capturing everything that's needed for the time period when we're ready to put a shovel in the ground. As you know, there would be a lot of design work that takes time before we even can start hiring contractors, so there's a lot to be done in order for that to happen. And so, we'd like to be able to follow that schedule, Craig, but if we can't, then we need to, we need to let that process dictate when we start with.
And I'm sorry, these costs are predicated, though, on a fall 2023, which would mean you'd have to get funding probably by November. So, granted, we want the process to take whatever time it takes to do right. The price will go up if it's not November. If it pushes out, you can add some escalator, which I'm sure David has written on the back of his hand that he can tell us right now, but he doesn't need to.
Well, without question, we know the prices are going up everywhere. I also think it's important we figure out a way to get as much information as possible out to the community as a whole. They have to be as aware as we can make them of what's going on so they can participate to the greatest degree. I have one last question, any concern, it's a little early probably, but Cassidy, as I understand it, is somewhat wet. Is that being taken into account for what area you're going to build in Cassidy, if you were to build there?
Yes, the short answer, Mr. Germaine, is yes. There is a wet area that is governed by the Army Corps of Engineers, and there is a buildable portion, and we're focused on the buildable portion. I'm not sure how many acres there is there, but it was an option for building the Clyde Brown School there as well, and there is enough acreage there, space for the design that David has presented.
I figured you had to have taken it into account, I just felt I had to ask the question, so. Okay.
Yep.
With that, Ms. McGinnis.
I'm just curious, Mr. Chair, Kathy McGinnis, 78 Island Road, why there's no rec department proposed through the chair, if I could ask, for Cassidy? No recreational involvement?
As I understand it, recreational department has been involved in these meetings. Am I not correct?
But did I hear that Cassidy, I'm sorry, Mr. Clacco, Cassidy, will the rec department participate if it's built at Cassidy?
The rec department would have a presence at Cassidy if we built the gym there.
If the gym, okay. And you did say it included site work on O'Gro, on Cassidy, which is good. And also, I thought that, Mr. Clacco, you mentioned that the charge of the Permanent Building Committee is not to participate or be the frontrunner for focus groups, rather you just pick the sites and then let the town take over from there? Recommend the sites, I'm sorry.
No, no, what I was trying to say, obviously, inartfully, was that our job is not necessarily to be an advocate for a project, but to facilitate the process. We've done, we will have done the analysis, the selection, the determination of whether the town can afford it, and its priorities of all of the things that it wants to do is done by the voters. And we can certainly say there is a need, it's been demonstrated through this, through the programming, and this is the cost in order to meet that need. But advocates for whether or not this is to be built should be by the rec, the library, and certainly the Council on Aging.
So, can I just, you know, can you clarify for myself that it would be $14.5 million for Cassidy Farm for a senior center only?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from anyone? Scott?
When you visited Medfield, did they have a gym on their senior center? Or was there a gym on theirs when you went over to Medfield's?
Did you hear the question?
I did. No, there was not a gym. Medfield is a senior-only facility.
Okay. So, if we were to do it at Cassidy, and you wanted to keep the cost low, you could eliminate the gym and just make it senior, which that's a good option, or you could just do the addition here and renovate it here, and you already have a gym here. So, you know, that's an option when you're doing the, talking to people and stuff like that, you could put those options out there. You know, eliminate the gym at Cassidy, just keep it cheaper, keep it just senior, and then here, you have, put the addition here, and you have the senior here, and you already have the gym here, so. But it's a good plan anyway, but those are some of the things when you're doing the outreach to the community, you know, so, thank you.
Good points. Thank you, Scott. Lisa?
Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut, a senior.
Welcome.
I was just wondering, is this information available anywhere? Because this is the first I've seen it, and sounds like you too.
Certainly what's being presented tonight is public, and we will try to get all this information out. And I agree with you, we need to, but it is available, and we'll make sure. I guess, Mike, you can ask that it be made available, and we'll figure out a way to get it to anyone who's interested. But the object is, get it out there. There's a lot more to be done, but this is a start, and part of it is going to be, is it senior-only, is it a community center, and what are the costs? We have a lot of work to do to listen to what people have to say as a result of all that.
Right. As a follow-up to what Scott mentioned, it sounded like any of these could be a community center with that, with the price listed, that it's not, it wouldn't be Cassidy Farm, $50,000, $14.5 million, that's only seniors. It sounded like it's kind of up to the town. We could have a community center for the same price.
Well, similar, the problem you have is, when you get into the community center, what they're looking at is to try to have the recreational facilities there also. So, yeah, they can all be used technically as a community center, but I think what they're saying about Cassidy alone, without the gym, is it becomes more of a senior center. The draw for the rest of the community is much more limited for its use.
So, the Recreation Committee was only interested in a gym?
Well, the Recreation.
Because they have a lot of things that are not in the gym.
Well, they do other things too, but the gym becomes a fundamental part of what they want associated with these facilities. But again, we have to wait and see what the community wants, what the seniors want, and yeah, Recreation, COA, they all have to be adding their piece to what they think is reasonable.
Having attended one of the working group meetings where this was presented, so I've seen this a couple times, this isn't new to me. The rec department was very interested in a gym because it really expands what they can do out there, but otherwise, the rest of their programs are in this part of town, the fields, the pickleball courts, the tennis courts. This building has the classroom space they can use. So, unless there's a gym out there, it's not, it wasn't as attractive to them as it would have been with the gym, although there's still obviously could be use for it.
Was anything looked at on the Cassidy part of using fields in addition to the building?
That was beyond the scope of what we were trying to do. We were looking for apples-to-apples comparison, I think.
At this stage, that has not really been considered for several reasons, but at any rate, no. Whereas this location does have some significant benefits from the rec department.
I guess my other question is, I'm, maybe I missed wherever it was determined that the Cassidy Farm could be built on, but the only thing I remember is we couldn't even put fields there because it was too wet.
I, that's why I asked the question. I don't know, I'm not familiar with the details.
I don't either, but it sounds like.
But I have to accept, if they've checked it out and said, "We can build there," I'm assuming they've done their homework, but that was the concern I had.
Thank you.
Well, I think that was very enlightening. Wayne, thank you very much for your time this evening. It's very worthwhile. We have a lot of work to do to get this out, so. And that's not all your job.
We have your call to proceed?
Do we need to take?
Well, what are you looking for from us at this point in terms of proceeding?
Just an understanding of what it is that we've done and to further develop the ability to conduct focus groups and to enlist the further support of the three stakeholders here, the COA, library, and rec department.
I assume the costs for the focus group are already as part of what you've retained the architects for?
It is.
Okay, so.
Do we make a motion, or do we just?
We can make a motion, I assume, or we can just say, "Do we basically support it?" I don't know that.
Yeah, the board could vote to say you support the PBC to move forward to the next phase of focus groups and gathering additional information to take the next step in the project.
I'll make a motion to encourage the PBC to support the PBC in moving forward, taking the next steps, conducting focus groups, and continuing to refine the project with the. the goal of getting it to town meeting in the near term.
Also to keep us informed, and if you need anything, to get in touch with us so we can support you in the process.
Second.
We can keep going. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. You have our support, is that okay? Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I mean, cut it off there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have been contacted by town council. He is wrapping up a meeting in another community, so it'll probably be another five to 10 minutes if you wanted to. There's a couple items we probably still can address, perhaps item 046, if you don't mind jumping out of order.
Yeah, let's take.
Which is zero.
046 is alcohol license for Millis Lions.
That's the approval of a one-day alcohol license.
Okay, yeah.
For the, yes, Mr. Chairman, we have received a request in your packet, it is an email from the operations support manager outlining the request for a one-day special alcohol license for the dinner fundraiser on April 1st for the Millis Lions Club to be held at the St. Thomas Large Hall, 974 Main Street on April 1st, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So, request before you this evening is to approve the one-day special alcohol license for wine and malt for a nonprofit establishment.
I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the one-day alcohol license for wine and malt for the Millis Lions Club, a nonprofit organization for April 1st at St. Thomas Large Hall from 6:00 to 9:00 for a dinner fundraiser.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the Millis Lions Club request for wine and malt to be served at their one-day function on April 1st, April Fool's Day, a dinner fundraiser from 6:00 to 9:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So that was.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could recommend, perhaps we can at least discuss item 043, having to do with the, just the status of the warrant for the annual town meeting. If you'd like to just talk a little bit about the articles on there.
Let me just see something here. Do we have anything that precedes that? I think before we close the warrant, we need to talk about 042.
Yes, I'm not asking to close the warrant at this moment, just I wanted to go through the articles briefly, just to go through a little background.
Fine.
And.
Why don't you go through the background then?
Okay. So in your packet is a list of proposed articles for the spring annual town meeting. Again, this evening actually, you approve the addition of an article, so I'll go through these as they are right now in your packet. The first is a standard article we do every, every town meeting, is just a check to make sure we, we address any unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year, so that's article one. Article two is to essentially make any changes to the current FY22 budget that may be needed for wages and expenses. Article three is the approval of the FY23 operating budget, so that's the central article of the town meeting. In this case, we have article four, which is to vote to ratify and fund the contracts for the SEIU, the firefighters local, 4704, the Massachusetts Coalition of Police local 171, and the AFSCME Council 93, local 1301. So those are current employment contracts, collective bargaining contracts that were, are under negotiation. So if those are not complete in time for the regular operating budget, we do need to set aside the amount of funds to make sure we have funds available to address any obligations within those new contracts. Articles five, six, and seven are the sewer enterprise, water enterprise, and stormwater enterprise funds. Then we have article eight, the consent agenda, which addresses amendments to the personnel plan, does the annual Board of Health Appointing Authority requirement, addresses revolving funds, as well as the community preservation fund. Articles nine and 10 have to do with the possibility of some articles which may be funded from the community preservation, an open space and recreation fund. One of those we talked about tonight being the Town Properties Inventory and Management Plan. If there's going to be some funding from the community preservation account, those articles, we need to set aside those articles to appropriate those funds. Article 11 is our annual independent audit of the town's finances. Article 12 is FY23 recertification process for the Board of Assessors. Article 13 is our capital items through the capital planning committee. Article 14 and 15, for consideration, are tree pruning and removal, as well as road maintenance and repair. Article 16 is the new computer lease for the schools. Articles 17 through 21 are the charter bylaw changes to be discussed. We have done another item on the agenda tonight, so we'll address that after. We've got the sewer bylaw change. Again, we're discussing that in another agenda item this evening. And then we have the zoning bylaws amendment, amendment to associate planning board member We also have a zoning bylaws amendment to add the IP2 district to tables two and three. We have the Medicare reimbursements for FY23, and then possible transfers of funds into the stabilization fund and the OPEB fund. In addition to that, the board did discuss this evening the additional, an article for the additional authorization for $500,000 for the PFAS plant.
How about snow and ice? Does that have a special prior years?
That would be under, yeah, that, that would not be here.
Okay, as long as.
We will, we will take, either take care of that through the FY22 additional wages and our expenses, or it'll be handled in another management through the budget.
I just don't want it to not get handled, so.
And I have at least done a review of these with the, with the finance director, and we'll be reviewing these again later this week.
Okay.
Are there any questions on, on the ones we covered that are on another agenda item before the board this evening?
It seems to cover it.
So we're going to at least.
And also, I just want to note to the board, we did receive a petition article. The town clerk received that earlier today, as well as I did, in regards to a proposal for an elected water and sewer commission. So that, I think the clerk confirmed with me today that has the required signatures, so that will also be added to the warrant.
So 29.
Yes, so it'll be, looks like the at least 29 are.
Right.
Right now.
I know, right?
So.
It'll be another short meeting.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
On number 17, it doesn't say who or what is being recommended to change from elected to appointed?
That would be the town clerk.
That'd be the town clerk.
It'll be me?
And again, this is just a listing. It's not the particular language or anything, it's just a listing of, because this is a breakdown of the charter proposal that was put forward at the spring town meeting, I mean, at the fall town meeting, that was just spliced out into five sections.
All of these will be going through much more detail, so.
I know we went through this at one point.
Go ahead.
But is there, maybe you can refresh my memory, is there a reason why we're not consent-agenda-ing other sections of this?
Yeah. Well, we certainly could consider that.
Like the re-enterprise funds, I would think, could be handled together.
That's a, that is a great question for town council.
Okay.
When he joins us, I think there are a number of things that could be done as part of that. And at the time that we put this into effect, I think it was a year or two ago, it was the first time the town had done it, so it was the first big step, but I certainly believe there are other opportunities.
Yeah.
And I would recommend talking with town council.
I wouldn't put the sewer and the enterprise into the consent agenda, but I'd make me make it one item with the three of them in one item. And then I think there's the opportunity, hopefully it'll come up at the capital planning to roll some of these, like the audit, the computer leases, all that into budget lines. If we can do that, that'll.
Yes, that'll be part of the discussion in the budget process, and that becomes an issue of funding and calculation of funding sources and so forth.
Yeah, and then if they're moved off, they can leave this line.
Okay. This gives us our first cut at what we think is going to be there, and we're going to have to go through.
Right, from here, I'll be, I'll be working to refine it, and if there's other proposed articles, I will put those forward to the board at every meeting moving forward until you reach the point where you need to approve the final warrant.
Right, and we'll open it as we need to, and then close it as we add and change things.
I think we did number 19 already. We did that at the November 2019.
Well, now.
Town meeting in the June 2020 ballot.
It still needs to go before the voters, as I recall.
No, that's, it was on the ballot.
I thought that was done. I agree with you, I remember it was on the ballot, and I thought the ballot was step two in the process.
That might be part of another thing, though.
Yeah, this isn't the name change, this is the duties and, this is the duties and authorities.
It just doesn't have a lot of description here. I think there's still some name changing that needs to happen in a different section.
Yeah, there was something about the name change that we had to take it back and get that done.
No, this was, this was the duties and authorities, I'm sure about that, because that's not on here, and I remember that was something that I hadn't considered.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be looking at this, this is, again, just the listing, we'll, you know, those are good points.
This is our first cut for tonight, and let's get it refined. If you see anything else, you know, we could open it at the next meeting and make any changes we want, and then close it. Okay.
I think, I think changing that one.
Do we know if town council is available yet?
He is, as of a couple minutes ago.
Yes, he's on the screen.
Oh, what timing.
Ah, look at that.
Timing is excellent.
Look at that.
Thank you, counselor, for joining us at the perfect time.
Okay. Mr. Tellerman, there you go. Okay, well, then I guess the first thing on our agenda right now is discuss the sewer bylaw article for spring town meeting. I assume each of you has a copy of that bylaw article. This is 041. I just want to find it on my own screen, I have it printed here. Oh, great, well, it's not there precise, so, I do have a printout. This seems to incorporate what we said at our last meeting that we wanted, and the comments, I believe, that everyone made to Mr. Gazinski. Do either of you have any comments on what is before us at this time?
I, just one comment. Section 3A seems clunky, the way it's written, the exemptions. I mean, the intent's clearly there, the 15-year and all that, but in the event that a property owner has a pre-existing compliant septic system, which was installed within the last 15 years prior to the effective date of this bylaw, such property owner shall not be required to connect to the sewer system for 15 years from the septic system's installation date. It seems that, and I didn't work this closely, that.
I don't know how much better you can say that.
Well, existing compliant septic systems shall not be required to connect to the sewer system for a period of 15 years from the septic system's installation date.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so you take out those.
Yeah, I see how you could kind of streamline that sentence a bit.
Basically, what I did was I took out the lead-in and then took out the second half of sentence two, all, line two, all of line three, and half of line four, and it, so now it would read, "Existing compliant septic systems shall not be required to connect to a sewer system for a period of 15 years from the septic system's installation date, subject to the provisions of section 1A hereof, on the expiration of the 15-year period or in the event that the property is sold or otherwise transferred." It just, it just read a little clunky to me at the beginning.
I'm not sure.
And I'm not sure there's a legal reason why it had to read that way. Often lawyers like.
Yeah, so it's, it's almost like a little more wordy, where it's saying that if it was installed within 15 years, then they don't have to, you know, hook up with, if it's with, you know, until 15 years from the installation date.
From the installation date.
But you could reword that, so you don't have to keep saying 15 years and 15 years. I mean.
I don't care, one way or the other.
I was just trying to get read clean.
My attitude is, as long as the attorney is comfortable with it. My concern is, I hear what you're trying to say, unless you've got a clearer wording on it, Jerry, it gets the message across.
Yeah, for expediency, if you'd like, we can forward the language that Craig has up to council for review, and, and for your review at the next meeting to approve it.
I mean, if it's going, if we're going to vote this tonight, I can vote it with the language that's in there, it just seems.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt anything.
It doesn't hurt anything, it just seems really.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm used to clunky language from attorneys anyway, but what the heck? Unless there's an issue there. Jay, have you got any comment?
No, I mean, I think the language, I think that we all agree that as, as we wanted to kind of expand homeowner rights, we started, it's, the language started to get a little clunky, but I, I think it, I think it read okay. The, the change I made between the version that Mike sent me was to make a reference back to the prior section, because I was, there was one little gap left that if it was exactly 15 years ago, then they should still be able to get that, what, what was it, 18 months?
Right.
Because, you know, so I wanted to make sure they still had that window up. Otherwise, I thought it was, could it have been written smoother? Yes, could we have kind of redone it, broken it up? I thought that for expediency purposes, because you're trying to set this in motion rather than rewriting things in its entirety, I thought it was totally understandable and unambiguous, but I, I think, is there a better way to write?
Yeah, I, I just, if we're going to vote it tonight, I can vote it the way it is.
I didn't have an issue with it from a legal perspective.
So if I have a 19-year-old septic system, I still have my 18 months to hook up. If I've got exactly 15, I've got it. If I've got 14 years, six months, I've got basically.
24 months.
Or do I have 18 months? You know, what's my?
Wait a minute.
Oh, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I'm at 14 years, six months, do I have 18 months or what to hook up?
Or 24.
Or 24 or what?
It'd be, I'd have to have the language right in front of me.
It's clunky, I can read it.
So if it's, if it's 15 years from the date of installation.
Right.
And at 14 and a half years, we implement this bylaw, then there's six months left to their 15 years. So what happens then? They have six months and then 18 months?
I don't know if they have 18 months. I thought the 18-month measuring stick was the, was the date of the bylaw.
Okay, okay, so they have six months then, in that case?
Well, they, those people would have.
Well, 12 months, I guess, right?
Yeah, 12 months after it turns 15. I'm in the same boat, you know, and I can take the, yeah, I, I think that, yeah.
I think it looks like made within.
I don't think anyone exists in that. I think we could probably find out that that example does exist.
That's true, that's true.
So.
Yeah, I don't think we have to worry that much about it. That's true.
So let's.
There's no charts, this is too, too complicated already.
So would we be making a motion to approve this then? So would we be making a motion to approve this, then?
Yes, I would, I would be requesting, then, that the board make a motion to approve this language for inclusion within the, within the warrant for the spring annual town meeting.
Okay, do you have anything else?
No, I'm, I think...
All right. I move that we approve the language of this sewer bylaw article for inclusion as an article on the annual spring town meeting warrant.
As written.
As written.
Second.
Move and seconded to include this most recent draft of the article on sewer bylaw to be included in the annual town meeting, spring, annual spring town meeting warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries in the other seat. Okay, then that's done. Proposed charter bylaw articles for spring annual town meeting. Those were the...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're packing. I did put a memo that was outlining the five items for the board's discussion, to see how you'd like to move forward with that as part of the annual town meeting warrant.
How come I'm missing that?
So I, can I ask a question already?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So after I just told Lisa that I thought number three was part of one of the, can you help me with number three? I thought that was changing, like, there was some wording from, of, you know, select men that hadn't been changed, and that's what that part was, because, like she said, we already, didn't we already, or did we do that in the bylaws?
No, it was the warrant, because it was a charter, because it went to the whole town as a, as a vote.
Oh, right, right, right.
And a bylaw doesn't go as a vote.
Yeah.
And I think that it was very broadly said, any instance of the word "select man" would be select with select board.
Select board.
So if we didn't change it, we just haven't changed it.
Okay.
But I think that this whole section is about the authorities of probably what reads the select board, because we had that whole authority section that was part of the original motion.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly what it was. It was the change in the wording, the change from select man to select board.
Well, and, and the authorities, I think the biggest piece was the, the authorities that are given to them to do, to ratify the appointment to the town manager and all of that.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, yep, 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 okay.
So...
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that one. So the five that we've got are here. I think, let me go to skip to number five. Did we not discuss saying that many of these duties and powers for the town administrator, we ought to put in a bylaw rather than a charter changes? Originally, these came out as recommendations from the Charter Review Committee.
Right.
And that's how they were set up originally, but I think in our discussion the last time, we thought about the town administrator, we want to have a little more flexibility if it's a bylaw, and making it so specific and putting it into the chatter, chatter, the charter, causes a lot more effort if we ever want to make an additional change.
Right.
So I think the object was to make this a bylaw. Am I not correct?
Right, this was, this was a bylaw, and it says a charter slash bylaw articles. It didn't subdivide them, but I think this is the only one.
That's the bylaw.
It's the bylaw.
I see, okay.
This one is to be a bylaw, we're in agreement on that, is that okay?
Yes, and that doesn't require a ballot.
Unless there was a piece, was there a piece of it that needed to be a charter?
And, and I think Jay could probably speak to this, but I think there were just a couple pieces that could not be accomplished through...
A bylaw.
A bylaw, having to do with the signing of the warrants, things like that. Jay, I don't know if there was anything else that you recall that could not be accomplished through a bylaw, other than the approval of the payroll and expense warrants?
Well, I don't have what you're currently proposing in front of me, so I know there were a couple where there were some existing rights and duties of the town administrator, where we said, if you want to do it by bylaw, you have, if the charter says something different, the charter is going to control, and then there was a whole other class, as you suggested, that can't be done by a bylaw and would require a charter. I guess I'd go through that list again once I see it. I haven't seen this particular proposal to see how it matches up with what we did on last town meeting. So when I take a look at it, we'll be able to cross-reference it against the statutes and the charter to make sure that it could all be done by bylaw.
So, Mr. Chairman, so if, based on what Town Council's saying, I could certainly work with him to come back, if you'd like to pursue that as an option, to outline how that language might read, as well as whatever items would have to be put off or pulled out in order to make that go forward.
Yeah, I think that's what we need, because it's going to involve a change to role of the select board as well. That's what has to be modified.
I would say that, I, I would like to find out, what's the minimum amount of change that we can put into the bylaw? Because the majority of that document was a bylaw stuff. At least 90% of it could be done through bylaw, I remember from the...
I want, I want the maximum amount in the bylaw, not...
Right, no, I'm getting there.
Oh, okay.
The mac, the 90% of it could be done through a bylaw, but if signing the payroll warrant and the accounts payable warrant can be done through a simple targeted bylaw change that allows those things to happen, and there's one or two items like that that would really make sense, then I would prefer to have a professional reviewing those and being responsible for signing them. I do it at my work, and it takes me an hour or two to go through those each week. I spend five minutes on a cell phone trying to scroll through it without any day-to-day involvement. I think it's much more important to have the chief administrative officer of the town devote the amount of time and energy that I put in for the, my place of employment. But, but having said that, there's a few targeted items that I'd like to see him be able to do that may require a charter change, but not the vast majority of it, which can be done through bylaw.
Yeah, and that's what we have to tease out, what pieces have to be chartered.
That's what we're asking, right there, because we need to know where the charter states certain things, if we're going to give additional authority. But I am, I have to be, I admit, I am a little concerned in that we want to be very specific about him signing versus the finance director or whatever, because I want somebody who is definitely looking through that, but has oversight, as well as ourselves.
Oh, I would still want the finance director to look at it.
Yeah, the finance director still has to sign.
Yeah, has to. I mean, I'm the CFO, and I have to do it, but, and I have to bring anything to my chief, my CEO over a certain amount.
I just want to make sure, I don't want it left to any sense of ambiguity that that has to be done.
Yeah, and I just think that he would do it...
That's required by law.
That's fine.
I think that the town administrator would be far more efficient at it than anybody on the select board, knowing what's going on.
Well, certainly. I look at it every time, and a lot could go by.
I mean, I look at...
Of course, I drive Lisa crazy, because almost every week I ask her...
What's this?
What's this, why? How come? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Lisa. That wasn't the Lisa, Lisa Moore is who I was talking about.
On number four, there's still the same problem that we spoke about at the November town meeting, that the charter says that you cannot make any change to the number of select board members without an elected charter review committee.
Well, actually, we've had that reviewed by council. There are different ways of doing it, it turns out, and we can do it different ways. And he's come back and assured us that we can use this process, it does have to go through a vote, and that's how we're pursuing it at this time. Jay, are we not correct in that? Is that how you viewed it?
It can be done through the special act process without the charter commission. We got that confirmation from the Attorney General.
It can be done through the special act, but then we have the problem of, two times we've done a special act, it's never been voted on at a ballot.
Well...
You don't have to.
That's correct. So if we go the special act, we can go that route. So we have to use Town Council to tell us the proper way of doing it, and he, that's what we rely upon, we pay it for that. Okay.
Yeah, and the reason it's broken into these five sections is because not all of them require the, the special act. Some of them do, some of them don't. That's why we broke it into multiple sections.
Had we gone forward with the single article before, we would have divided the article, which would have essentially made it five separate articles, but then whatever was passed would have been passed to the state legislature as one article, which is what they prefer. But that didn't happen last time. They chose to get rid of the entire article, whereas reality, it should have been voted as a divided article, but that, we're not doing that this time. We're going as five separate articles, and the state legislature will take it that way, however we end up doing it.
Well, only one piece goes to state legislature, right, Jay? Only, only the change of select board composition would have to go to the state legislature.
Whatever that is, the point being that we're doing it this time differently, just to avoid any further complications in the future.
I just have one comment on number two, that the word warrant, the selectmen, or board, select board, it's very clear that the select, it's the select board's warrant. So if you put, I personally think if you add warrant to the title of the finance committee, it's confusing to people. It makes it sound like the finance, it's the finance committee's warrant.
We're not even sure that this is going to be submitted. We're waiting to hear...
Just giving a comment.
I know. We're waiting to hear back from the finance committee as to whether they even want this, and if so, what the name change will be. I would say, this one is far from locked in any concrete. It's going to be reviewed, but thank you, Lisa. We all have concerns with that one.
Yeah, and, and again, I, not to belabor it, but I, I don't think we need to wait for them to tell us when to name it. We are the select board.
We could make that decision.
If we want to take it off the warrant, if that's our goal, leave it as it is, just take it off.
We can, we can do as we wish, but we're waiting to hear from them as courtesy, so...
And, and again, I, we can figure that as we get there.
Kathy McInnes.
Yes, Kathy McInnes, 78 Island Road. Yeah, you can do what you wish, but I'm wondering what is wrong with two separate votes. Not everyone can make a town meeting. You're very limited, 200 people are making a decision on how many items, rather than having it go to the ballot also, which I'm sure the clerk would say is not a major impedent in moving the justice along. And Jay, Town Council, I apologize, could you say that they could all be done also at the ballot, if the select board so chooses?
Kathy, you can always call me Jay. Please don't stand on ceremony. The, the select board has a choice. They can do every single charter change through special act, or they can choose to do it through the charter route, which for everything except for the select board composition item is a two-thirds vote at town meeting and then a vote at the ballot. So it's, it's up to the select board how they want to pursue it. It's quite clear that it could be either or.
Thank you.
And it's however they choose to present it.
Thank you, Counselor, Jay. I, I really urge you to have both ways for them, because it, it would show more transparency that you're going the full, both ways. Either or, I know you can do, but I think it's more forward to the people to have two choices, want to vote on this.
Are you talking about item, item number four specifically, Kathy? The select board, item number four specifically? Because the other three would...
No, I think everything should go to a ballot.
Well, the other three would definitely go to the ballot, because we're not going to the state legislature.
Yeah, it's what you decide, but I'm just, I'm just speaking that, I think it would be...
Yeah, yeah, and the first three, I wouldn't go to the state legislature.
So I guess that we'll leave these, what, as they are for the moment, and we're going to come back with the appropriate wording over the next week or, next meeting or so?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well...
I think holding a placeholder form makes sense, and then we have...
All we're doing is a placeholder.
They should all definitely be there, but yeah.
And then we'll finalize that at the next, okay. So at this stage, having gone through those, I think we're at a point where for tonight we can close the town warrant. So unless either of you have any concerns on that, I'll take a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Second.
So move and seconded to close the warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The warrant is now closed. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Jay, before I get into this next one on the Stormwater Credit Manual Amendments, they really, I don't think you've had a chance to put them all together for the comments that have been made to you, if I understand the latest email that I just got. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. Late last week, I took a look at a couple of requests that Aaron had, and then over the weekend, you and I spoke on Friday, and then over the weekend, you sent me kind of a red line, which has a, a number of comprehensive items, and I, I need to spend a little bit of time kind of synthesizing both yours and Aaron's and getting it into a document that you all can consider at perhaps your next meeting.
That's fine. Yeah, if it's okay with the two of you, I'd say let's plan on this for the next meeting with Jay's comments. Craig, I don't know if you've had a chance to add any...
I, I didn't have enough experience with it to have an opinion on it, other than what I read, and I, I was fine with, yeah, the proposed...
I've tried to, in my comments, put in what I believe we talked about at the meeting we had, and Jay has that, he has yours, and we'll see what he comes up with. So if it's okay, we'll just wait until the next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay. Onto getting, dissolving the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee. So there have been a lot of issues that we have been working on over the many months with the Enterprise EFAC, and I think by and large, we've addressed most of them. We put together a bylaw. There was a discussion on a sewer moratorium. That goes into effect technically tomorrow, but we're going to try to establish a sewer authority, that's sewer policy, that will, once we agree on that, we can then lift the moratorium. And we also discussed the way in which, if I'm not mistaken and correct my wording, DPW employees were utilized throughout the town, setting up chargebacks, appropriate accounting for their use. We've worked with the DPW director and town administrator to make sure that these conform through Town Council with reasonable guidelines all the way through. So I think we've tried to work with every one of the issues that were brought to our attention, if I'm not mistaken in the way I phrase that. Having said that, I think that at this stage, I would recommend the disbandment of that committee. If we see a need in the future, we will add it. So I'm going to open that for discussion, Aaron and Craig.
I disagree with disbanding it. I think we've started on the sewer policy. We still haven't had the vote on the, we have the moratorium. We still don't have a policy, and we don't have the bylaw passed. Until both of those things happen, I think there's still work to be done by the committee. I think there is a point when it could be disbanded, but I don't think that time is now. I think the enterprise fund allocation method was started by this committee. I still haven't seen any new work done on it. I know that he's working on it right now. Jay is, not Jay, sorry, Jay. It's, Carl is working on it, but I haven't seen anything come out this year on it. Until we start getting those numbers in, I still think there's work for this committee to be done, and then, of course, PFAS, but I'm comfortable with us managing the PFAS going forward. I think that once the sewer moratorium, I'm sorry, the sewer policy and the sewer bylaw are passed, and we've agreed and finished the enterprise fund allocation method, then I think it would be appropriate to have a conversation about disbanding, but not until then.
So I disagree, because the committee is, is used as an advisory, as in the title. So we've asked for certain things to go through this committee so that we could be advised of them, and we were. So we got the advice on the moratorium, we got the advice on the bylaw, which we had been looking for, for a long time, and then we refined the purpose of the committee to focus on the bylaw, and we then got the bylaw. In terms of the allocations, I think that starts getting way out of the scope of an advisory committee, and I think all of that is underway within the proper channels. As Pete said, we can put it back together if it's necessary, but I feel like at this point, with the information we've got, with the things we've now refined and put together, that it's really up to us to further direct that direction. That's just my opinion.
I happen to think much along those lines. I think we've gotten advice back, that's what they're there for. We've executed on it, we still have some things to do, but we've had the advice we need to move forward. I think that's important. At this stage, unless something new were to come up, I don't see that there's any further need for the advice from that committee. And to that end, I think the time has come to dissolve the committee. So that's my view at this time.
Okay. I move that we dissolve the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee.
Then I'll second it. So moved and seconded, I'll take the vote. All in favor? What?
Is there any discussion?
No, this is within the committee, it's the select board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. One nay, two for. This committee is hereby dissolved. Okay.
Mr. Chair, would there just be a post-vote comment? If I might, as chair of the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee that appreciated the work that the select board asked us to do.
I will.
I just would like to say that several knowledgeable residents have concluded that the safety and future of the town's water and sewer needs warrant the creation of an elected water and sewer commission. Thank you.
Yes, we are aware that the petition has been filed, so thank you very much. Okay. That's the end of that one. I think the last item for open meeting that we've got is discuss board attendance at committee meetings. This came up as a result of the Division of Open Government, which I think all of us have received a copy of, and how we should be conducting ourselves. And I'll be very frank, my view, and this is my view, and I just want that understood, is that our, our involvement with the committees is such that we, if you will, charter them to provide advice, to give us input and to conduct their business, but largely independent of us, to the point where after they've conducted their business, reached their conclusion, they are then going to present whatever their findings are or their conclusions to us, at which point we can discuss, question and request that they, to, we can request them to whatever degree we want, how they establish the recommendations that they're providing to us. You know, we could use capital planning, but any of them, as an example, where they are obligated to come to us with full information on how they reach their conclusions. That does not mean we have to agree. That's our right, they are an advisory group, no matter who they are. But we need to give them the latitude of working as independently as possible, in my view of how the committee should operate. Now, there's a second piece to this in that with the new dog, Division of Open Government, or some, I think that's what it is, decision, they are basically telling us that any meeting in which two or more of us attend and make any comments might be subject to an open meeting law violation. There are limits, and I know our town council has tried to explain some of those limits. I'm just concerned that we, understanding that, don't put ourselves in jeopardy and by the same token, give our committees the widest latitude possible to reach their conclusions without us, if you will, breathing down their necks. So that's my view. The other part of it is, where those committees are important, we have a representative to the committees and that person is in a position to make comments and bring back to the select board any concerns, issues or anything else that was raised during those committee meetings prior to the time that the committee might be asked to present to us. So that's my view. Okay, I'll, comments?
My view is agreed that we let them do their job. But the other part is, we're getting ready to talk about an $18 million or what, a $12.5 million?
Whatever.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that range.
Yeah, senior center at the Permanent Building Committee where I am the rep. I would believe strongly that you two should attend as many of those meetings as possible because the town's talking about spending 12.5 million bucks minimum. And for me to come back and report on it is not the same as you seeing what's going on at those meetings. And I think that's true with most of these committees. And a lot of them aren't videoed. I mean, I'm at the Economic Development Committee and there's no video of that. The minutes are legally accurate, but it doesn't catch the nuances and everything else because we have a volunteer doing them, you know, we don't have.
I agree on the attendance, Craig, that's not an issue.
No, no, I'm just saying that I think it's helpful for other people to attend these meetings also from this committee. I would feel differently if we were going to another committee that is chartered by the town. But these, as you said, are, are, are committees that we chartered that are here to present and advise and help us. I find it helpful to see how decisions were arrived at, not just the final decision. And this all started from, I was embarrassed at our last town meeting by how little I knew. It was my first as a selectman from the capital planning. There was literally maybe a 45-minute presentation, which was quite good. But getting to town meeting, I realized there's a lot I didn't know. And, and unfortunately, I had that article.
Oh.
Yeah. So it, it really, I, I don't think the select board is, I don't think the town benefits by a select board that is less able to attend meetings than a normal citizen is able to attend.
Okay, so the way I, the way I interpreted this was attendance is not the issue.
Right.
It's speaking.
Well, and it's, I, the clarification I got from Jay was questions are allowed, it's expressing opinion that is not allowed.
But you obviously have to be super careful in how you ask that question.
Right, and I'm not saying there even would be questions asked.
Yeah.
But, but, but I would have liked to have known the expiration date on the grant for the solar charger. You know, that, that we were informed, misinformed at, at our meeting. And I pretty much almost said that at town meeting, thank goodness Bob got up and, before I could speak, because I was about to tell him it was going to expire in January, which is the information that had been passed on to me at, on our meeting, you know, in truly two years. So I really would have been beneficial to see the deliberation on how they do this stuff.
There's nothing I'm suggesting, I would say, we can't have all of us for that matter, even if it's not an open meeting attempt. The concern I have is if we begin asking questions at all and not careful about the implications of those questions being interpreted as anything that could be considered a violation of the open meeting law.
Well, this is crazy right here.
Yeah.
Because they asked, they asked questions, did not deliberate and still got in trouble.
Well, and I think that my proposed solution is a simple one. For the committees that we charter, the Permanent Building Committee, the Economic Development, no longer the Enterprise, but the, the ones that we charter, post them as open meeting for the select board so that we don't risk violating an open meeting law. If nobody shows up except for the designee, no harm, no foul.
I think it also depends on the board that you have at the time.
My concern is if.
Well, and post the agenda as that of the committee. So we, since we aren't legally allowed to discuss removing Peter as chair, if two of us attended a posted meeting and it doesn't say that on the agenda, we can't take action other than what's on the agenda of the committee. So that would be my other concern, you know, that, that we want to make, I was using that as an example, flip there. But if it's not on the agenda article, you know, that the, let's do the Economic Development Committee. Our agenda is their agenda. Yeah, so we're going to, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So the only items that are legal for discussion are what they propose in their agenda. We can't discuss anything other than what the Economic Development Committee is putting in their agenda.
So I still think what he's saying though, my interpretation of what Pete's saying, and I, although it's hard for me, I do think there's merit with not, not meaning that, anyway. Just that I wouldn't want to even unintentionally overwhelm these people by all of us or multiples of us asking questions when I don't want them to feel on the spot and then I'm breathing down their neck. Like we might have questions, but if it's true that they're all supposed to come to us here and that's when we can like flush it out.
Then we should schedule these important committees far more frequently for far longer times. And I don't think that's a good use of anybody's time necessarily, but if that's our goal, the Permanent Building Committee, the Economic Development Committee and, I always forget this one, the one that I planned to go to tomorrow night, but I can't.
Capital planning?
Yes, I've got a conflict now. But that one, because I always call CPC, which is the other committee.
I was going to say, I ran into that problem the other day.
So, so, so my, my.
That's on the first two?
No, 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 I'm saying that the capital planning committees on the first, I got in a conflict. So I'm just trying to avoid violating open meeting and yet still being an informed selectman so I can do what I need to do for this community when we're not filming or writing the level of, I mean, I'll watch the video. I watch the videos for committees that I can, that I can.
Yeah.
But if our subcommittee groups, and half the time, the permanent building committee audio was on, you couldn't follow it because it was a camera in a room, you know, a single camera on a phone.
Yeah.
In another way though, let me take it one step further, right? I've been thinking about this and I'm kind of exhausted at just the thought of trying to, to do the best I can means I'm going to have to listen to meetings like every night of the week, which isn't sustainable either. So it, I also wonder about our presence in general all the time. Like can we get an executive summary from the chair about how a meeting went? Do we have like once a month that we show up at a meeting or they request us? Like I worry about this a little bit in terms of sustainability.
Yeah, and, and my problem is I would rather spend an extra hour and a half or so, or two hours at a capital planning committee meeting than not be informed. And, and, and I'm not planning, I would urge you not to go to the economic development meetings. There's important stuff, but it's not at the same level as the capital planning.
On the other hand, if, if I want to attend a PBC meeting, just use that as an example, as long as I don't say anything, it's not an issue.
I went to the last one, I was just on Zoom, I didn't say.
Well, this is my, this is my question. If there's two of us present and I am, or you with the other one and I am at the PBC, if I'm expressing my opinion, have we violated open meeting because I am now deliberating with another select board member present? And that's.
Oh, that's a really good question.
No, I, I believe Jay answered that as long as the person who is designated to represent the board at the committee can interact with them on a regular basis.
With another select board member present, would that be accurate, Jay?
But that other select board member must not open his.
I'd ask Jay if that's accurate. Is it accurate, Jay, that the designate to a committee can interact with the committee with, and express opinions and say what I would suggest is with another select board member who is muted on Zoom watching?
You know, this is, this is something that I don't think the Division of Open Government kind of contemplated when they made this most recent terrible decision. But if you read literally what they're saying, let's, you know, so kind of flip the hypothetical, let's say Craig, you attend a meeting where Pete is on the, the subcommittee and you don't say anything. And Pete's talking for 75% of the meeting about stuff of the subcommittee, but then said, well, I can sit here and tell you as a member of the select board that we intend to do X.
Oh, that's different.
Then, then I worry because it, it, even though I think that the Division of Open Government, which isn't trying to hurt anyone either, might be able to distinguish that from the scenario that they described in their most recent guidance. I, as a town council, I can only go on what they've already set date and I think it gets close to the edge. Do I think we'd have a plausible explanation and do I think if someone complained, they would say, oh geez, we hadn't thought of that, you know, try not to do that again would likely be the result.
Yeah.
Not a, a fine, not anything else, but you know, we have these situations because of what I think was a bad decision by Division of Open Government having these unintended consequences. And you know, I worry about that a little bit. Not so much that I think that again, anything bad is going to happen if someone comes out of the woodwork and complains about it, but it does set some different guideposts out there for us.
And that's why I support, that's why I proposed a simpler solution for me was post them all as open meeting so we don't have Aaron watching and me speaking or Aaron speaking and me watching.
But if you, if you go and you don't express the opinion that I think the select board, blah, blah, blah. Because when we go to these meetings, we're there to listen and to contribute. We shouldn't, and I know, I don't speak, when I talk with them, as for the select board. I'll say, I'm concerned, I'm concerned with this, this is my opinion, but this does not necessarily reflect that of the select board because before we do that, I have to take it to the select board and give them a chance to discuss it.
But you as a select board member have now given your opinion, even though you might be Pete, the private citizen. You've given your opinion and you're a select board member. And that, I believe, is the concern. And I just see the way around it is post all the meet, post, there's really three committees I can think of. Economic, capital planning and PBC. What other committees do we appoint that have a lot going on? Sidewalk doesn't exist any longer.
I don't think there are any other key ones. But I still come back to the freedom of the committees. And I feel strongly that, I would say to Jay, that the appointee at the meeting should be able to speak his or her views as long as, again, they don't say, this is, I'm representing the select board in my view. But beyond that, they should be able to speak because they are the representative. If there's another person there, it just means they can watch, but they can't talk. I understand, there's a new, you're trying to thread.
Yeah, I don't, I, let me start by being absolutely clear. My biggest fear is not, is that I do not want to violate open meeting law.
I understand.
My second most important thing is I want to be a well-informed selectman. So those two things are coming into conflict.
Right, but the key here is, first, I see it, beyond the open meeting, which we don't want to violate, is the ability to allow the designated person to interact with the committee and yet have a select board member there who remains mum and throughout the time of the committee meeting.
That might be what the interpretation you wish it to be, but the interpretation that was just given was, was that that could conceivably cause problems.
What do you think of that, Jay?
This is one of those things where, hey, don't ask me, but this is very much, you guys are both are espousing really good policy, personal policy considerations. I think Pete, you were making legitimate points as to your concerns about potential running afoul of the open meeting law or chilling the activities of, of a board member because he's concerned that someone else is there. And Craig, likewise, you're making really valid points on wanting to understand how the sausage is made. Look, this exception to the open meeting law was put in place to promote exactly what Craig is suggesting. And that is that boards attend other boards' meetings to get smart. If it weren't for this kind of cocky maybe decision by the Division of Open Government, which took us all by surprise, we'd still be living in that world. We're not, I think that, I think that you can both by kind of adhering to some common sense probably achieve your goals. I'm not trying to be a mediator here or anything like that because I, I respect you both and you're both trying really hard to do the right thing. And I just, I expect that you're both going to do the right thing and if you sense that something is getting close to the edge, you'll probably address it on the spot because I think you both understand the rules. So I'm not taking sides. I, I support you both and I think there's a way to accomplish what both of you are doing. I do think you guys should continue to communicate about it. And if you know, oh, you're going to attend a board that the other one is on, I think you should let them know ahead of time. Again, that's not a violation of the open meeting law, that's just a comment, hey, I'm going to be at that meeting tomorrow, so there's no surprises, but it's not perfect. I'm as disappointed with the Division of Open Government about this as anyone. But you know, I, I don't, I don't want either of you to stop, to think that this is a reason to stop doing what you think is the best for your particular view on being a select board.
Yeah, and I just, I just have a strong rule, I never want to be a test case or have a disease named after me. So those are the two things that I've lived life going by.
Yeah, none of us want to be that sort of test case.
You know, I give a seminar to, to towns, I haven't done a Milis one in a while. And the, the Division of Open Government isn't out there to hurt anyone. They're not, they might come out with a ruling on something like this that either confirms that it's in line with their prior thinking or creates. or creates another exception, but it's not, it's not like anyone is going to come down in a way that humiliates or changes the direction of a board. Nine times out of 10, 99 times out of 100, they're just of the mind if they think there's been a violation of, don't do it again. So being a, I'd hesitate to call it a test case. Could it create a new standard? Yeah, is it going to call the ethics of the board into question? Um, because you might have inadvertently stepped in a weird one comment that the other person made. No one, no one at the Division of Open Government exists to, um, search out gotcha moments.
Yes, and...
So I'm not encouraging anyone to break the rules either, but I, I think that you should keep going on, doing, doing your good work. Keep communicating with each other, keep these rules in mind. I gave a memo or an email that kind of lays this out. There are some rules of the road, follow them best you can, and I think you'll be okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Please, yeah.
So when, uh, when there's a situation where we're at a meeting, and we've done it before, obviously, kind of like the tri board meetings, right?
Yeah.
When we're at a meeting and we post a meeting as well, because we're there.
Yeah.
Yep.
What else does that involve? So for instance, let's use economic development.
Yeah.
You're at economic development and you're going to be there and a meeting's posted, right? So what, what other work has to happen because that meeting's posted? So does that mean that has to be recorded and somebody has to do select board minutes for that whole meeting because we were, we called it open and we were there?
Technically, it would require minutes, yeah, but the minutes could be...
Yeah, but with the tri board, we've always taken the finance committee and minutes and used them, yeah.
Member Underhill attended a meeting and then Member Schultz asked a question.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, you're right, everyone.
And most, most meetings, well, all meetings I'm aware of, they have to have somebody recording what's going on.
I just mean like in terms of double the work, right? Because they already have...
It's not double the work, it's, we get the copy. Using your example, I'm the representative there, I would take those minutes and just give them to Karen and say, this was the select board meeting that we attended.
If we, if we made it an open meeting for the select board, then that's how you would do it.
Yeah.
The question, so that's one side, one aspect. The other aspect is what I'll call the infringement or the way in which we interact with the committee. And I am inclined to give them the greatest latitude, but I understand Craig's point. Forget whether we can attend or not. Um, let's say we agree, he can attend, but he can't say anything because it's not posted. And we decide we're going to take that risk. If I choose to attend, um...
Oh, I see.
A meeting tomorrow somewhere, or whatever it is, ABC meeting. And Craig is ho, is the official from our group, yeah, it's a risk, but if I don't open my mouth and I just watch, I'm willing, I might be willing to take that risk.
I would be willing, it's, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I, 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 a lot of the law is ridiculous, a lot of the time is the problem.
I mean, that's me, I'd be willing to take the risk. But my concern is if we make it an open meeting, first of all, I would feel that we need to talk with the committee and see what they think. But secondly, because after all, they need to feel they can work in however manner they want. But the second part is, you know, this gets to a concern that we've discussed many times, dealing with the five members versus the three, to be very frank with you. Uh, we have to live with this and maybe in perpetuity if they don't go along with the five members. But it is a difficult situation. I'm just not inclined...
It just changes the scale. I mean, there could be three of us that want to go, you know, if there's five, it's the same problem.
Right now, the unfortunate thing is only one of us. The moment two of us get together, it can technically be a violation of the open meeting law.
And, and I just see there's a cure that is absolute, which is post the meeting. And that, and that solves the problem. And as long as you're chair, it's your prerogative of what meetings are posted and what aren't meetings, meetings aren't posted. So I respect that and I understand that. I completely disagree with it and I would be tending to post more than not because I would, I don't want to run the risk. Because it's not you taking the risk, it's the select board taking the risk. It's all of us that are taking that risk.
Let me ask this, why not ask...
And, and we just proved tonight that these are our committees. These aren't independent committees, we just dissolved one of them. So, so a chilling effect isn't Aaron and I sitting in the capital planning committee meeting. It's us dissolving a committee because we feel it's run its course. I mean, that is something that can be quite chilling. And that was one of the reasons I was...
It can be.
Not in favor.
Not in favor, yes.
How about, um, if we go to the key committees that we were just talking about and ask them? And ask them, do you mind if from here on we post those as open meetings? And give them the chance to at least let us know their ve, their feelings. We don't have to abide by them.
I can imagine anyone's going to say no, first of all.
I, 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 I agree with that because no one will say no, but I also don't like giving people a choice when you already know what they probably, when they're perceiving that they kind of are, oh, of course not. You appointed me to this committee and you have the ability to dissolve my committee. Of course you can attend my committee, you know, so I, I think that it's...
Maybe, maybe not, I don't, I happen to not think that we...
I could see Nicole not agreeing.
We have solitants like that at our committee meetings that aren't willing to speak their minds.
I just think that, I just think honestly that, um, that if you want to ask, go ahead and ask. But I, I just would rather it be posted, that eliminates any risk for us. If these three committees that, and I don't think there's more than that, economic development, permanent building, and capital planning, what other ones do we have that are appointed by us?
Well, I mean, plenty, but I don't, like, I'm on the cemetery committee, do you want to come?
They would, okay, let me rephrase. They would have a direct impact on the warrant or things going forward to town.
Hey, do you know the front loader thing?
Okay.
I have seen their articles.
Okay, economic development, CPC, and PBC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let me do the following. I will, how about if I send a memo to each of the committee chairs? And just tell them, here's what we're thinking of doing. Um, we'd like your thought on what you think about that. Uh, let me put it this way, Wayne Clacco is no shrinking violet on something like this.
Well, and, well, here's the other point, what if they say, no, we would prefer you don't? And we decide we want to go to the PBC meeting, does that insult? I think asking for something that you're counting on a yes from is risky. I've asked my kids that question, I've asked my coworkers that question.
On the other hand, if I'm going to offend them, if I'm going to make some people upset, I want to know that too, so...
Okay, I, I think it's the safest move to post the meeting. I think that it's, uh, makes sense to do it. If this is the way we can get them posted, then I'm in favor of that approach.
Can I ask one more question? I'm so sorry, I really don't want to belabor this, but if, if a meeting is posted, let's use economic development again.
Okay.
Okay?
I love it.
Yeah.
So if a meeting's posted for economic development, you're the person, you're the representative, right? If it's automatically posted, because that's what we're going to do for these three committees, and neither of us choose to show up, then...
Either or both.
Not, yeah, let's say neither of us.
Oh, neither of us, okay.
We didn't have a quorum, I don't have to collect minutes.
So then it's just like the meeting...
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I don't have to collect...
If I have a quorum, the meeting didn't occur.
Did not occur, yeah. Yeah, and, and the only reason honestly that this has become such a little issue here is because it's never been not posted before. I mean, I've had...
Never been not posted.
Every other finance committee would have select board show up quite often as a posted meeting when I was on, when I was on finance committee.
Yeah.
Um, I'd have Charlie Vecchi and others in the audience.
Oh.
PBC often had two or three people because they'd post, I, we, I guess this comes down to I've never seen a select board deny posting a meet, a select board chair deny posting a meeting. And that's what, that's what got me going on this one, and I apologize if that's, because, I mean, it was a legitimate, and this isn't a hyper technical thing. It's, I don't want to violate open meeting and I don't want to not learn, as I started out with. So this isn't some hyper technical little point, but this has always been, of course you want to go to the meeting, let's post it. And now it's not, and that's what's made it difficult.
Then comes a next question. If, if it's a posted meeting, then any of us who attend have full right to interact with that committee?
Absolutely.
And that's the problem I have with it.
That we should exercise some restraint so that we're not overruled in the committee?
Is that...
That makes sense.
I, I don't disagree with that either, that there needs to be some expectation of maturity on the committee. You know, that we are not going to do that.
That's my concern, is, that, that's really where I was coming from. I think it's important for us.
It's been beaten to death enough, you're going to ask those three, I think we're there, okay?
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead, please.
Everybody.
Well, I, I honestly...
Who's fucking out this far?
Yeah.
Lisa Hurd, it just, it seems like this open committee meeting that we're talking about right now is different from the open committee meetings that I'm familiar with where, for example, the school committee might invite this, or the school, or the tri board meeting.
Yeah.
You know, you all get together, you're all around the table, you're all participants.
Yeah.
Whereas this is something where there's one person on the committee and somebody else in the audience and it, that might ask a question. It just sounds like it's a different kind of open committee.
So, yes.
Until the Department of Open Government changed the rules, everything you're talking about is exactly right. Now we've got this new hypersensitive Department of Open Government that...
But I think also what she's saying is the, the tri board meeting is an understanding, right? All three of these boards have decided that we are going to meet together and we are all going to participate. Versus, here's a board and we've just decided we're going to go and, and do what we will. Do you know what I mean?
I do, but those are our boards that we created, whereas the other one is three boards that...
But we need to be nice, Craig.
We, we do have to be nice, I'm not saying not to be nice, but I'm saying there's a huge difference between the elected school committee and the appointed committee that we put together.
Sure, well, yeah, that's true.
So, so I would, I wouldn't crash an elected, I wouldn't collect planning board or anybody else.
Lisa, give me one second, I noticed Lauren, Baris has a question.
As far as I'm concerned, it's, it's only in retaliation to the open government rules. Yeah, the department, and, and I'm just, don't want to get called on it. And I want to make sure that we can go and do these things, but if, anyway, it, I'm, I'm done with it.
Well, wait a second. Lauren, you had a question.
Yes, I did, thank you so much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, because I had an experience where I wanted to go to a committee meeting and I was on the select board at the time, and I was told I wasn't allowed to go because it was not posted. And it turned out that my other two colleagues, in fact, were there, but I was told that I, in fact, I could have attended so long as I just didn't directly interact with them, that I could have attended and I could have asked questions. And the, and the tripwire was whether I was directly interacting with them, sitting with them, that type of thing. Is this what's new, just so I understand?
This is new.
And then I have to...
That's the change.
This is brand new, the, um, dog letter that came out is only about a week old.
That's the change, they got rid of that ability to do that.
It's a ma, it's a major change, so...
And then the second thing I just want to say in general, because I heard, you know, I heard obviously that there was a committee that was disbanded this evening. And I just want to say on the record as a general statement, um, because we had this issue for the economic development committee that all committees are volunteers. So if one of the things that's going to happen is that the select board is going to be looking for kind of a quote unquote higher caliber of minutes, it's going to be really important to remember about the care and feeding of volunteers on committees. And, uh, tonight we disbanded a committee and I didn't hear anybody except for maybe Kathy McGinnis say thank you. So I just want to put that out, out there that we have to be really careful about how we take care of committees. And if there's some new standards for minutes, I think that's something that needs to be...
Yeah, Laureen, I said that, and, and I know that, and, and the comment was the minutes are absolutely legal, absolutely fine for the people attending, but you can't read the minutes of any committee meeting, even this one, and get a flavor and a tone of what's happened. So it's not a comment or criticism of the person taking minutes. It's, it's that the minutes never convey what a video would and the video never conveys what a live, um, attendance would show.
And Laureen, you're absolutely right. I actually, I was actually thinking of that while we're talking about other things. But I'm like, hmm, now's probably not the time to bring that back up and thank everybody. But absolutely, um, I, I think everybody here is very appreciative of anybody that volunteers to do quite literally anything.
That brings up an interesting point, and why don't we write a letter to each of the committee members?
And thank them for their service.
And thank them for their service. I think that's great.
I can, I can start that.
Would you like to do that? That'd be terrific. Laureen, thank you, those were good comments. I guess she left.
No, she's still there.
Well, so I can't...
I'm here, I'm listening.
I can't see, what can I say? As you get on, you lose your eyes.
All right, executive session?
Yeah, we're going to go to executive session. So everyone, thank you very much for your time and your patience this evening. We are now going to dissolve into executive session where we will, um, go through, um, as soon as I can find it. I got it right here. Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, Massachusetts Coalition of Police 171, and Milis Police Association Dispatcher, and SEIU 888. After the executive session, we will come back into open session and end this meeting. So again, thank you everyone for tonight. Jay, um, I want to especially thank you for your time. I know it kind of put you on the spot with everything else going on, but we really do appreciate it. So thank you very much. Okay, I'm now going to poll the board to go into executive session, so...
Oh, polling, yes.
Yes, I think we have to poll the board, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So, Aaron?
Yes.
Yes, Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Okay, we're now leaving the open session, we're in executive session, let's move into the other room. Thank you all.